Good evening. It is 6:30 on Thursday, March 27th. This is the second March meeting of the, second regular March meeting of the Arlington School Committee. We did have a special meeting last week. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted in person and through the use of Zoom. The meeting is being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI, and the meeting is being recorded because all members will be present. Mr. Thielman is traffic delayed. Votes will be taken by voice unless a roll call is required. Because persons who wish to access the meeting using Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website that posted an agenda, and supporting materials for this meeting are also available on the town's website. Due to open meeting law restrictions, the committee cannot participate in or access Zoom's chat function. While everyone is welcome to observe the meeting, active remote participation is, requires advanced notice. All participants are asked to activate their camera and shall provide their name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. We begin with public comment. Individuals or group representatives may address the committee on items of school business. The length of the public comment segment should normally be no more than 20 minutes. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address, and will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material. The chairperson may reduce speaking time if needed and/or may permit extension of this time limit. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of school operations and programs that concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel, nor against any member of the school community except for the school committee or the superintendent in their capacity as the operational leaders of the Arlington Public Schools. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. The public is reminded that the school committee does not hold jurisdiction over the performance of the school personnel other than the superintendent. We have four people on the list for public session. The first one is Jacob Gross. Is that Gross?
Yes.
Okay. Please step forward to one of the mics. Identify yourself, name and street address, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jacob Gross. I live at 15 Cleveland Street in Arlington.
Go.
Oh, thanks. So, thank you very much. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the math curriculum. I'm the father of two daughters in Thompson Elementary, and I'm here specifically to talk about my support to give all math-loving kids in the district as much opportunity as possible to enrich themselves through honors-level classes in high school. And I come at this position from different aspects. First, as someone who went through the New York Public School System and took honors math classes myself, I can say that for kids who find themselves bored in classes, it's very frustrating for them, it's very frustrating for the kids and teachers around them if they're not being challenged on a regular basis. And then I could also say that as someone who uses, who's used math in my graduate degree, I have a PhD in physics, and, you know, upon getting to higher-level math as an undergraduate, I found it very necessary to rely on the AP Calculus I took in high school to have a chance of compete with kids who are frankly better-prepared, who came from either private schools or came from international programs where they were challenged at even higher levels. And then finally, as in my current role as a CEO of a clean tech startup in Cambridge, I hire PhD engineers all the time, chemical engineers primarily, and I can say of the five PhDs that we have at my company, including myself, unfortunately, only two of them were educated in the U.S. All the rest were educated abroad. And so I think from all these perspectives, I just wanted to say that I think it's crucially important to give our students as many opportunities as possible to get into the honors-level programs. I know my fifth grader is about to take the bypass exam in sixth grade, but I think as many opportunities as we can to allow kids to access these programs, I think would benefit the whole community. So, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. Next up will be Phil Bradley. You're not the basketball player.
I am, yeah.
Name, address, and for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Phil Bradley. I live at 19 Lombard Road in Arlington. My son is a high schooler at AHS, and I want to talk about the same topic of the previous speaker. My son loved math since he was little. He's never done Russian school math or anything else. He just really loves math. He's very good at it. And his teacher at AHS is also remarkable, I should say. She's excellent. But because every ninth grader in Arlington High School takes geometry of either the regular path or the Mahler's path, it's not possible for him to take any more advanced class. And because of the vast gulf of interest in math for children, and it's so wide, this is wildly inappropriate for him. I hadn't realized this when we came in, and it means that he ends up spending a lot of his time just teaching the class effectively. This is extremely frustrating, and for the moment, he's still engaged, but I see a path of where the flame of interest he has is going to be extinguished, and I, as a parent, find this heartbreaking. I, thinking back to when I was in high school, I was able to take classes that were more advanced in math. I became a mathematician, and it made a whole difference in my life. Every day of my life, I work on math, and I beg AHS to consider some way, not necessarily to have more tracks, but to allow children to be able to access the class that is appropriate for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Gabriel Bradley. Begin, same rules. You state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Gabriel Bradley. I also live at 19 Lombard Road. I am the aforementioned ninth-grade son. I came here tonight to tell you all about my own experiences at Arlington High School as someone who enjoys math and appreciates academic rigor. I'd like to make three points today. I first has to do with the experience of other kids I've talked to regarding the bypass system in sixth grade and how it affects them later on in life, even extending all the way to senior year at high school. I am in ninth-grade honors math. I talk to those of my classmates who are doing the best in their math classes and who have historically been very strong in math from outside of school, talking at lunch or otherwise, just speaking to them in general. I was surprised to hear from them that almost none of them had passed the math bypass test. And when I asked them further, they told me that this was because of the nature of the test itself. The test is set up in such a way that thinking outside the box and solving the problem the way that you would like to is completely unencouraged, and to give the correct answer if you do not do it in the way that they deem appropriate would be to fail the test. My second point is about my own experience coming to AHS from a private school. Although I was in an accelerated math program at Leslie Ellis School, I was not given the opportunity to take the bypass test, and so I was stuck redoing the math class that I'd already done. After speaking to Ms. Bronner and finding out that I wasn't allowed to skip past the math that I'd previously encountered, I've spent a majority of this year helping to teach my classmates the new concepts. In my opinion, the most important elements of a good class are a helpful teacher and kind students, and I have found that in my class, I am lucky enough to have both. However, despite this, I'm still very under-challenged, which tells me that there's some issue in the curriculum or otherwise in the placement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up will be Patricia Vesilev-Missuro.
Hello. Patricia Missuro, 18 Cleveland Street, Arlington. So, thank you, Gabrielle, for speaking. I want to say we did meet with a small group of parents met today with the superintendent, deputy superintendent, Octavia, and we really appreciate, recognize that you're seeing and you want to make changes together. So, there is no tangible progress right now that we have made. We've made progress in terms of just sitting across the table and talking, but we do appreciate it, and we hope that, you know, we can make good progress together. I just want to say that, you know, there is a discussion. We appreciate everybody here just making, focusing on this issue, you know, and I think we'll, from our side, as we call ourselves, Arlington Math Parents, because we care about math and science, and, you know, there's people, there are children behind it, so we'll keep bringing those stories. Like, if there is doubt that there are kids, and there are many kids there, we'll keep bringing those stories, and I can see that you're hearing us. So, we hope to make tangible progress, both for the cohort of kids that are today in sixth grade, which is how it all started. Like, I was not aware what was happening until it happened, until my kids were affected, and I think others, other parents aren't either. They are not aware. We trust you, the educators, to make decisions for our kids, but sometimes, you know, the momentum of the ship, I know, thank you, Mona, for making that, you know, the momentum of the ship, it's tough to make changes, but let's just push that ship and make it so that the kids benefit. So, I hope we can make the tangible things together for that cohort of sixth graders, which is what started it all, but also for everyone else to make major changes in the math curriculum, allow kids to be challenged, and make pathways happen. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have with us tonight, representing the Arlington Education Association, Jenna Madero. Say hello.
Hi, there.
Okay, we can hear you, you can hear us. Zach Phan and Sophia Distefanis are with us from Arlington High School. How's your math class?
It's pretty good.
We rely on your expertise over here, because I'm not taking high school math right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a report for us of what's happening over in the big building?
Yep. So, spring sports have just started. I think I said that last week, but I think they're really starting now, like first games and everything. The Hades Town Musical is also coming out, April 4th to 6th, which is like 70-plus students involved in that. We have inclusion and diversity workshops happening during, every Thursday for the next three weeks during advisory, so it's just like one-hour workshops that promote inclusion or diversity. And the Student Council is in the process of planning a pep rally, a talent show, Teacher Appreciation Week, and proms. Those are all in the works. And then, finally, this is a little bit off-topic, but school lunch has been really good recently.
That is an unusual discussion point.
I know. Yesterday, there was like ramen with like chicken and edamame, and like, it was really good. I don't know, so a lot of my friends are like, you should mention this at the school committee.
I will share the praise with them. It's good to hear.
I like a good ramen.
Yeah, it was really good, actually.
I'm glad to hear that. How's the demolition going next door?
I've seen like in the hallways, students like, like from, from the stairways, you can kind of see the, the construction and the demolition, and there's students that like watch, watch it happen in the stairways. But yeah, but I think it's really cool, like, I feel like it'd be kind of fun being a construction worker, because you just get to work on those buildings, but...
Yeah, I've got to admit that I too enjoy watching it. I came in the building yesterday, and the one thing that hit me is I came in the main entrance, because you can now see the athletic fields from, from the common area, from the central spine, and it just sort of brought so much more light into the building, you can see how wonderful the design is.
Like the first floor buildings.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's going to be great when that hulk is finally removed, so it's only going to be a couple of weeks for that. They're doing really well. Anything else, guys?
Nothing that I have written down.
Okay, let's see. Who else do we have? I think that exhausts the public speakers and the reps. Ms. Elmer is remote somewhere, but I don't see her. I see Ms. Pierre, and Mr. Gorski, and Dr. Kredel Thomas. So, we've got our all-star team on remote. Next up, we're going to have a presentation from the Transportation Advisory Committee. One of the reasons why this is important to us is, two reasons. One is that we've got a bunch of schools that rely on kids getting safely to and from school, and secondly, we are an appropriating authority, appointing authority, not appropriating. We don't give you money. We are an appointing authority of one of the seats on the TAC, and I think it's good for us to hear from the agencies that we have a responsibility to make appointments to. So, Mr. Stubbe is the chair, current chair of TAC, and they're doing some great work, and I think it's important for us to hear how they're doing relative to the safety of our kids coming to and from school. Mr. Stubbe.
Great, thanks, Paul, and thanks for having me here. I'm Jim Stubbe. I've been in Arlington now for about 11 years over here on Edgehill Road, so not far away from here. Just fun fact, since I got to Arlington, I've walked 18,000 miles in the whole general vicinity, so, you know, when people go, well, we'll drive by, and you go, no, you get out there, you got to walk, you got to be in the environment, you got to deal with what's going on. Anyway, we'll start off with a little bit about TAC, and then I have a discussion topic for this committee, which hopefully we can tack into 15 minutes of that. So, TAC was established back in 2001 by the Select Board. We advise the Select Board on transportation management, generally, but how we operate, we don't go off on our own without, you know, being directly tied in with leadership. You know, the goal is to enhance the quality of Arlington by improving safety, mobility, and access for people in all modes of transportation. It's made up of a mix of volunteers and town staff. We represent all precincts with a number of at-large public folks, and some owned from APD, DPW, DPCD, Chamber of Commerce, the School Committee, and the Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee. So, we have all of those folks representing different parts of town, and if we need somebody else, we get them to come and invite them. Over the course of all of that time, because that's almost gone on 25 years or 24 years here now, TAC has swung back and forth between tactical and strategic, and a mix of both. Right now, we're in a phase where we're transitioning. We had gotten into sort of a mode of every little thing that came along would be given to TAC, and we'd go spend a lot of time to decide whether there should be a stop sign or not somewhere, and it chewed up a lot of our time, and it left us not able to look more tactically at what's going on across Arlington. In the last year and a half, and I'll talk to that on the next slide, there have been some changes of town that have really helped us to be able to broaden our view and all of that. So, what happened in the last year and a half? Well, we have a new town manager in Jim Feeney, new senior transportation planner in John Alessi, a town staff safety group with John and Corey Ratel and Bill Coppethorn, and I forget somebody from FIRE as well as on that. They are actually now our triage for all issues that come up transportation-wise. It goes to that group, and they look at it and go, yep, we need to take that parking spot out, or we need to add a stop sign or take it down. It doesn't come to TAC and get lost in our weeds for a little while and come back with a bigger answer than they're looking for. What that's really done is it's enabled us to go out and better address some of the tactical, strategic issues like the speed limits across Arlington, safety zones across Arlington, and everything else. The other thing I forgot to mention as I was going through, we now actually have a very consistent way of bringing issues up into town staff's visibility. There's a break-fix site on, on the web for issues across town. Something there is broken, you can go in there and fill in the form, and DPW will get it and they work it. There's also a transportation, roadway safety request form that was established going on a year ago now, which really says, goes to that safety group, and they triage it, and either it comes to TAC, they reject it, or they actually just give it to the appropriate town department and go fix it. So, there's a lot less time spent in that cycle or not. So, moving back towards the strategic types of things that we're doing. So, over the past year, and I don't know whether anybody's noticed, we actually have changed and taken down all the speed limit signs on Park Ave and Broadway, you know, so we, we've been working, let me back up into history a little bit. Arlington went to Townwide 25 in 2017, but what happened was there's a number of things called special speed regulations from the 1970s that were left in place, so pretty much every major route into town said Townwide 25 and immediately contradicted by a 35 sign or a 30 sign or whatever, and then you change the speed limit six more times before you're done, to the point where I would even drive in on my own streets and around it, I wouldn't know how fast I was going. So, we were asked to look at that by the board, and we came, TAC came back and said, yeah, let's get rid of all of them. So, that's really the path we've been on since we actually got the approval from the Select Board. So, the working group for TAC is working actively with the transportation planner and the rest of town staff and Mastot to make that happen. Like I said, so far on Park Ave and Broadway, we've removed all the old speed limit signs, so they're no longer, you know, coming down that Park Ave field, there's no more 35 signs or 30 signs or anything else there. It's all recently now replaced with thickly settled District 25 signs and just the Townwide sign up at the top. Also, all the other speed limits of 25, above 25, were just very recently rescinded as well. We haven't gotten out there and taken the signs down, but we will, over the next couple of weeks, we'll get an assessment done and get it to DPW through Jim Feeney, who's been pit bossing all of these things. While we were working on the signage up on Park Ave, we realized there was an awful lot going on in that Arlington Heights Business District, plus we've had three different pedestrian crashes up there, you know, and one with one being a tragedy and all of that, that we said, we need to actually embrace what a safety zone is for Arlington. So, the same working group teed up a safety zone for Arlington Heights and got it in front of the Select Board, and that got approved by the Select Board, but even more importantly, because we brought it with, and led with this, is we brought it, we brought a process to them that says, we're going to be bringing you a lot of these coming forward, this is how we're going to do it. Are you happy with the way we're bringing this data to you? So, we've established a process with the board that says, next up, Tom Parks and playgrounds, because that's where all of our children are, so that's part of the discussion we have in a couple of minutes. So, we teed up that safety zone in the Heights, it's been approved, we have an implementation plan on the table. I think they have to make the signs, and then once they get that done, it'll get given off to DPW to actually put the signage up and figure out what we're going to do, you know, otherwise for traffic calming and all of that, because that's ongoing as well. So, teed up the next issue, which I had mentioned, the school zones and parks, playgrounds. I'm feeling very strongly that we need a strategic assessment and recommendation from schools and parks and playgrounds that kind of mesh together, and the reason being, right now, you know, the reality of the school zones, which pretty much every school has them, we may be missing some signs here and there, we're not consistent with our signage around the schools, but those signs generally are applicable only during school hours, a very limited range, but the schools have got playgrounds and parks, or there's a park right across the street. It's drawing lots of people in there, and we, there's some conflict, the way Mastot set up safety zones and school zones, they don't play, work and play well together, so we're trying to figure out, you know, how are we actually going to attack this, and how are we going to protect our vulnerable users there seven days a week from, you know, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. or whatever the hours are that we think we need to actually get some priority in 20 mile-an-hour speed limit in that area. So, I guess the question I'd like to throw out to you at this point is, I would, what do your careabouts in that space? You're living, working, and breathing and thinking about those properties, where our schools reside and where the playgrounds reside next to them. What would you all like to see in terms of, you know, clamping down or whatever you would like us to go do? Because right now, we're at the point where we're going to shape that, and we have two test cases coming up, one around Stratton and one around Thompson, where the SSRs were rescinded because they've been in place over the school zone for, in place of the school zone originally in the 70s.
Statutory speed limits, SSRs.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, SSRs are special speed regulations.
Special speed regulations.
So, those were all done in the 1970s and have been in place ever since. So, you know, what, like I said, when we went to Townwide 25, those SSRs were in place on all of the major roads, there were a lot of higher speed limits still left in place there. So, what I'm looking, I mean, I'm willing to hear anything. If you don't want to make comments, that's fine as well. You know, we will go off and make a decision and bring it back to you, at least share what it is we think we're going to go do to try and address the fact that, okay, the school zone only covers half of the playground at Stratton, or at Thompson, rather, you know, that type of thing.
Questions soon from the committee? Harden.
Thank you for coming. I was on the TAC 20 years ago, and we were, we were taking a long time to debate about stop signs, so I'm glad to see the new approach. It's fantastic. So, thank you. So, what specifically, I guess, do we, do we need to do going forward?
Well, what I'm really looking for is, you know, if you could wave your magic fairy wand, how would you like the streets signed and speed limited?
Near the schools.
Near the schools. That's really what I'm kind of getting at, and, you know, we don't have a fairy wand, but we can make a lot happen if we actually push, and I'm pretty good at pushing this stuff. We have a good working relationship with the board now. I don't think the board's going to be the sticking point. It might be APD, or it might be Mastot we have to go talk to, that type of thing. I know, I know John Alessi, who had worked at Mastot, and when the safety zones were talked about, or the school zones were talked about, they had the discussion at Mastot, the LG, you know, those hours only cover a little bit, the schools have playgrounds, our vulnerable users are still there, and they just, they didn't come up with an answer, so I think we might need to be a little creative about how to come up with an answer that passes muster, is enforceable, and all of that kind of thing.
Great, thank you. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Thank you. I don't understand what the difference is between the safety zone and a school zone and stuff.
Yep, I can give you a short answer. So, school zones are applicable only during school hours, off times, it says, when children are present or specific hours of the day, and when those criteria are not met, it defaults back to the Townwide speed limit.
If it, if it says if children are present, does that take care of your concern about the usage being past school hours?
I think I, I'm not sure that it does, but that's something that we could be, it could, that's an option, absolutely. I'm thinking actually maybe the option might be, hey, make it seven days a week, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and just let it be, and make it, leave it a school zone, and spread them out, make, define them a little longer, because you can't have the overlap of the safety zones in the school zone, even though Cambridge and Somerville went ahead and did that anyway. They kind of did what they wanted when they put their safety zones up. They want all over, all over their streets. If you've driven there at all, you'll notice there's signs everywhere all around town for the safety zones. But the safety zones are 20 miles an hour all times of the day or night between the start sign and the end of speed, end of speed zone. That's really, that's really the fundamental difference. School zones, school zones were intended both at the national level and at the Massachusetts level to only be applicable at the times where there's most activity from the students. But I don't think that's in keeping with, you know, the Connect Arlington Plan that says, you know, walk first, we need to protect our vulnerable users. There's much more sentiment for that right now, so now's the time to tackle this to the ground. So, that's what I'm planning to do anyway.
Keep on.
I would just put in one vote for, I think we should do what we think will work for us, like Cambridge and Somerville did, even if it's not quite.
Any other members of the committee before the chair asks his questions? Okay, so here we go. My first question is technical. Now, I, I've read the law, and I understand how safety zones work. It's basically a vote of the Select Board in Arlington, and they can establish it, so they have complete discretion over that under law. School zones, does that require Mastot approval?
They do.
So, it's much easier for us to put in a safety zone than a school zone?
Correct.
Now, I noticed the state has changed their school zone regulations recently, that the old regulations didn't allow for pre-k's or high schools, and now they do?
That would be in sync with the national MUTCD rules.
Yeah, and they've expanded, because the, the school zones were very restrictive about how close to the school they had to be, and they've widened that out a little bit. So, I just like to think about areas where we've got multiple schools going on, and plus some of the preschools, like Broadway coming through near the Thompson and the Gibbs, certain, you know, we've got a couple of situations where we've got major streets. I mean, Hardy School coming down Lake Street, where we've got schools in busy areas that it sounds like we want those to be safety zones, not school zones, especially with the bike trail traffic on Lake Street and other things going on. Do you have any enlightenment on what's, you mentioned Stratton. Can you describe a little bit what's happening with Saferidge School up there?
John Alessi's working that. I know he's actively involved in dealing with property issues and all of that. That's about the most... issues and all of that, that's about the most I know about it.
I think Dr. Allison Ampe has a property in that domain.
Right. John sounds like he's very consumed by that these days, so.
And I know, and I know you've got a consultant coming in on Park Ave, and.
Yep, that's Monday evening, we're going to have a discussion.
We have one of our students who are going to and from school at Oakland Ave, who got it there.
It's a town, it's in the Town Hall Auditorium.
Yeah.
At 6:30 on Monday.
6:30 Monday, Town Hall Auditorium, discussion of Park Avenue Safety, be there. Okay, any other questions from the committee? I appreciate you, yeah, oh, Dr. Allison Ampe?
So, listening to your charge, it sounds like bus service comes under your purview. Is this correct or not correct?
Not, not really, no, I don't think. We don't really have any control over the MBTA, right?
Right, I just meant advocacy and stuff like that, because buses are definitely something that we're interested in, but if you're not doing buses.
No, that's, that's not something that comes up in TAC often, I don't believe it's in the governance.
Okay, thank you.
There's not much we can do locally to influence the MBTA, but Phil Eng should be coming and visiting sometime soon, and we can have a little discussion there. Anyone else on the topic of TAC? And we recognize the importance of your work and how partnership with the school department can be really helpful in terms of establishing safety in school zones going forward, and please keep the communication coming, and I'm sure that this committee is happy to help in any way we can.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you. The superintendent's asked to bring forth a K-12, to postpone the SOI till later in the meeting, and to bring forth the people coming to visit with us. First, so the next up will be K-12 ELA report, superintendent?
All right, I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Ford Walker, who's going to introduce while I pull slides up.
Great, good evening, everyone. I have the privilege of welcoming Christina Cooney, Beth Federico, and Maria Amato, who will be presenting this evening. Just a quick kind of introduction, because I believe this is Christina Cooney's first time addressing school committee, and maybe some of your first time meeting her, so I just want to give a quick introduction. So I'm excited to introduce Christina Cooney, our Director of English Language Arts. She comes to APS with 23 years of teaching and leading experience. Prior to APS, she was the literacy coordinator for the Westboro Public Schools, and before that, she worked as a literacy coach and specialist, literacy consultant and principal, and elementary teacher. Mrs. Cooney has an extensive curriculum development and implementation experience and background, and is passionate about disrupting systems that prevent all students from having the skills that are necessary to access rich literacy lives. I'm excited that Mrs. Cooney has joined our APS team, she's jumped right in, and is leading our new curriculum implementation, building relationships across the district, connections, and just doing an overall amazing job. I'd also like to introduce Beth Federico. Beth is our EL implementation specialist. Prior to this role, she has taught six years as a multilingual learner teacher at Stratton Elementary School. Prior to this, she was a fifth grade classroom teacher and reading specialist in male roles. And Ms. Federico has just jumped into the EL implementation specialist role this year, and has really prioritized supporting the new curriculum rollout at the classroom level across K through five. She has provided coaching support to our educators and leaders, co-taught lessons, provided professional development and support in many ways. She's working closely with Mrs. Cooney to reflect on the takeaways from this year and apply those next year, so that we can have an even smoother implementation process. And finally, Maria Amato is joining the team this evening, and she will be supporting the presentation. She's one of our literacy coaches in the district, and she's been here in APS for quite some time, supporting educators, supporting the rollout, and supporting our leaders as well. I'm excited to welcome the team, welcome.
Okay, thank you and welcome, welcome to our, to the Arlington School Committee. One word of advice, please make sure you talk into the microphone, or the man will come out of the little booth over there and redirect your efforts.
And let me know when you want me to move the slide.
Okay, great. So we're all excited to come here today to talk about the EL education rollout, we're really excited to sort of honor all of the great work that's been happening in the K-5 buildings, and to kind of give you an update on where we are and how we're going to move forward. So our agenda for today is we're going to give just a quick update on sort of where we are, we're going to talk about the levels of support that we've put into place this past school year to ensure strong implementation across the K-5 buildings. We're also going to share some stories of success, and of course, with any new curriculum, we also have challenges, so we will touch upon those as well. And then we'll kind of talk through our planning as we look ahead to next school year, and we'll go through some resources to support success, and then of course, answer any questions that you may have. So year one of implementation was last year, I was not a part of the district at this time, so Beth Federico's going to give a little bit of a recap of the year one implementation, and then I'll talk through where we are in year two.
Sure, I was lucky enough to join Stratton's fifth grade team as part of the year one of implementation, there were two grade levels at all seven elementary schools that volunteered to be part of the year one implementation effort. And then in year two, we now have full implementation across all the seven elementary schools, and we also have been providing some ongoing professional development, which I'll talk through a little bit later, with our EL education consulting partners. Throughout this entire year, actually starting last summer, we began providing professional development and support through literacy coaches, planning, they did some summer work, to really ensure that this year of full implementation was successful and that people felt supported. And through Beth's role, one of the things that I think has been so important in this year two of implementation, is that we've been able to offer some differentiated PD for professional development and support options for our year one implementers, knowing that now that they were in year two, that their needs might look a little bit different than our year one implementers. So that is a great segue into levels of support that we've had this year. So we ran some summer professional development sessions that were optional for teachers, coaches, and principals, and so this really allowed us to provide, or to start to build a really cohesive foundation around our vision for the work across the school year. Additionally, we have had quarterly leadership sessions for principals that are designed for school leaders, and supporting them in the challenge, sometimes challenging and often rewarding work of rolling out a new curriculum at the building level. Additionally, we have provided instructional coaching cohort sessions, so that's professional development that is very specifically designed for our K-5 literacy coaches, and that might be around crafting a coaching cycle around learning targets, or that might also involve us thinking about like how to, within the coaching role, how to support like continuous learning cycles within our buildings. We also, this year, have been able to have a coach from EL education who comes and visits our schools to provide additional coaching and support, both for the literacy coach at the building level, but also for teachers within that building, and that's been incredibly effective. Each school has had seven of these EL coach school-based visits, or will have seven by the end of the year. I think where we are right now is, we're at approximately five, with many have visits coming up next week and into May and June. We also have been able to do district-based EL learning walks, so this is, we have a district-based learning walk team, Beth and I are a part of that. We walk with Dr. Ford Walker, Dr. Holman has been involved in our walks, Matt Coleman, we have done, Dr. Credle Thomas has been a part of our walks, so we basically, in these, we are walking the individual elementary schools with our EL consulting partners, and we have seven indicators that we're looking for as we walk the building, and we're visiting classrooms, and we're looking for these seven indicators, and then we're having conversations about what we're doing well, what our areas of strength are, and where our next areas of growth are. And that has been incredibly helpful, and so along with that, that's part of our implementation monitoring and data collection, so we can look across the school year and sort of look across the seven indicators to really see where are our strengths within these indicators, and where are our areas of growth, and from that, how are we going to continue to provide more concentrated coaching support in different areas and things like that? It's allowed us to sort of have a formative assessment in place that, where we can continually tweak professional development and support based on what we're seeing. And all of this, it happens because we have regular strategic planning sessions with our EL education consulting partners, who really help us envision and plan for this work. And finally, on the ground, every day, I have, we have an amazing literacy coach team, we have a literacy coach in all of our seven elementary schools, and they have done extraordinary work this year, supporting teachers, supporting principals, supporting other staff in supporting our students, which is our most important piece. And then we've also had the luxury of this one-year EL implementation specialist position that Beth Federico has done just an outstanding job supporting teachers, and so I wanted to give her an opportunity, because we were so grateful for this position this year, and it was such an important position, we just wanted to give her a chance, I wanted to give Beth a chance just to speak to some of the work that she's done specifically.
Thanks, hi. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve as a district implementation specialist this year. I've gained valuable insight into the thoughtful collaborative effort required for a successful curriculum rollout, which I've never been a part of before, so it was fantastic. Working alongside so many dedicated educators and students across the district has been both inspiring and rewarding, and I just wanted to share with you a few of the things that I've done this year. So I have provided support within the classroom, specific to our Cohort One teachers, to make sure that they still felt supported in their second year of implementation, because it was still new. More recently, I've been supporting some of the long-term subs in the district to make sure that our kids have continuous access to high-quality instruction. I've been really enjoying leading professional development, that's specific to our Cohort One teachers, and also was able to attend an ML department meeting this past week to help our ML teachers think about ways to support their students in the classroom, so that we're always ensuring all of our students have access. I also got to work with the literacy coaches and attend meetings as needed, and also co-teach some professional development with some of them, which was very rewarding. I helped to organize, coordinate, and plan those district walkthroughs, and also attend them, which was fantastic. I partnered with our district leaders to attend those quarterly leadership meetings and learn more about how we're using that data to continue to sharpen our practice and continue, you know, continue to roll this curriculum out effectively. And another thing that was really fantastic was I got to attend the National Conference, the EL Conference in Atlanta this year, which was so rewarding and also really interesting to see what other schools across the nation are doing with the EL curriculum. So thank you so much for this, for this opportunity, I really appreciated it.
I think the last thing that I would say is, one of the things that we recognize is, like, when you're rolling out a new curriculum, there's a ton of work that goes into it, and we're asking a lot of principals, teachers, staff, ourselves, students, and so we wanted to ensure that we had very high levels of support for all of these asks, so we felt like this was important to kind of update you on where we were with all of those pieces. And so now I want to share some stories of success. You can see on this slide, we have very nicely, and it's always just a wonderful surprise when I open my email, we have gotten some amazing emails from parents across the district who have reached out to thank us for the work and for the curriculum shift that they've seen in, in their students' education. In, I don't have a quote from this, but at the beginning of the year, our fifth graders do a unit around human rights, and I had many principals saying to me, we got some amazing emails from parents thanking us for this powerful unit, and so that felt really good, that feels like we're moving in the right direction in terms of our work. So this is an email that I received recently from a Hardy parent. And then also, we have built-in time to sort of reflect as a coach team on what we're beginning to see in terms of stories of success, and one of the, our largest goals when we're beginning a curriculum rollout is for teachers to have the opportunity to really internalize the curriculum. We cannot begin to truly like tweak and really be as responsive as we want to be for the students in front of us until we can deeply internalize the curriculum. And what I can tell you is, when I go into classrooms, we no longer see teachers with the lesson plan out in front of them, reading off the lesson plan, they are, they know what the learning target is, they are incredibly intentional, moving students towards that target, and the planning work that has happened at the school level has been incredibly powerful in terms of the conversations around what is the standard, what are the standards, how are we going to get students to meet the standard, what will we do if students don't, and what scaffold supports and tools will all students need so they can be successful? So I wanted to include this quote. Finally, when you walk around our buildings, I want to highlight, students are engaged in joyful, purposeful, and rigorous learning. One of the things that I think has been incredibly powerful is that all students are included for module block, that means that all students are having access to grade-level content. We are seeing way more purposeful planning and collaboration among grade-level teams. Like I said before, teachers are really deeply internalizing the curriculum, they're thinking about the standards, and thinking about how can I, you know, craft lessons and support my students to meet the standards. And one of the other things that I'll highlight is, almost every week, I get a call from another school system around the state of Massachusetts, who is asking us how we rolled out this curriculum and can they come visit? And so we have hosted visits, and we have more in the pipeline, from many surrounding districts, Concord, Harvard, Winchester are some of the few that are either have planned visits coming, or have been visiting our district recently to learn from our rollout And with any new curriculum, of course, there are implementation challenges, so some of the things that I think we're sort of bumping up against within these challenges are, you know, the first year of curriculum rollout is trying to learn a curriculum at like warp speed is really, really hard, it takes time. To know a curriculum deeply, you really need, I would say, like, three years, and so we have just been trying to think about ways that we can support either during common planning time, or through our professional development, through our ACE meetings, like how we can support providing time and space for that internalization. I think the other challenge that we're seeing is, it's like hard to be a beginner, right? It's really hard to be a beginner at anything new, and so I think there's a vulnerability piece there, that we are just working to support in terms of opening teachers up, many of whom are incredibly skilled and have been teaching for a very long time, to the feelings that come with like not knowing how to do everything right, right away, and I think that that's important. Along with this curriculum rollout, one of the things that we are building is a culture where we are continuously learning, and that means we're opening up our classrooms more regularly, and that is maybe a slight shift from where we were before, and so people are becoming more and more comfortable with more people coming through their classrooms and having conversations with them about teaching and learning. And then this is a knowledge-based curriculum, right? So part of the curriculum is, we need to continue to build the content knowledge alongside building, learning the new curriculum, and teachers have done an amazing job with this, and coaches have done an amazing job sort of supporting this work, but, you know, again, that goes back to just, we just need a little more time to really deeply know that content. So looking ahead, as we look ahead to next year, we want to continue to offer more differentiated options for teachers and staff, knowing that everybody has different pathways into this work. We also, now that people, now that all of us have more deeply internalized the curriculum, we want to spend some time digging into assessments and looking at high-quality student work, calibrating our thinking around what that looks like, and then like showcasing it, and having opportunities to really celebrate all. it, and having opportunities to really celebrate all the good work students are doing. We also want to continue to offer some really strong professional development supports. So we are very committed to thinking ahead on how we can offer continued support to our school leaders and also professional development to coaches so that everyone can continue to have a really cohesive, collaborative view of instructional leadership that we're all kind of rowing in the same direction. We are going to continue to do district learning walks so that we can continue our data collection to determine, you know, our glows and grows, and then always be thinking about next steps. And then we also, as Beth mentioned, are really committed to continuing to send teacher teams. I think it's like sort of the next step for next, 2026, because there's no EL conference 2025, but we would want to do some continued participation in the EL National Conference, which is a powerful learning moment. And then in terms of curriculum work, I think as we look ahead to next year, now that we are beginning to internalize the curriculum, this is the perfect opportunity for the ELA department to collaborate more with science and social studies and think about how can we capitalize on, you know, interdisciplinary collaboration and planning so that we have, we can move students, support students in deeper learning around specific content areas. With a new curriculum in K-5, it's really important that we now look into doing some curriculum alignment work with Gibbs, and really thinking about now that we've put this new curriculum in K-5, sort of taking a deep dive into the curriculum at Gibbs to ensure that we have some vertical articulation and alignment, and see where there may need to be some possible shifts now that we have a more structured curriculum in place. And finally, we want to also be thinking about offering more opportunities to engage and connect with the community. So this is actually happening in April, but we're offering a first, our first community caregiver information and engagement session on April 29th, which we will be advertising more broadly shortly. But we're also hoping to offer some more ongoing sessions as we look ahead to next year for ways that we can support our caregiver community with better understanding our curriculum, engaging with our curriculum, and also supporting their children at home, and then also just involving the community. There's a lot of opportunities for tapping into community resources as part of this curriculum, and so we want to just ensure that we have some strong partnerships in place. And so to support our success, you know, we're going to continue to develop our own community of practice and engage in continuous improvement cycles. I say all the time, my literacy coach, the literacy coach team is probably sick of me of saying this, is like, we never arrive, right? Like, we're always trying to get better. And so as soon as we hit a goal, it's like, okay, let's, what are we doing next? And so I think that we're going to continue those cycles. Principals are also engaged in continuous improvement cycles at each of the elementary schools, and they are in similar cycles in that once they hit a goal, then they create another continuous improvement cycle. We're going to, we are in the process of crafting and looking at our professional development schedules for next year and how we can support this work. And then we will also have some continued K-5 literacy coaching support. The coaches will continue to provide support in the building. We will also continue to provide professional development for them so that they can do that. And then we will continue our partnership with EL Education because that's been very helpful for us in rolling out this new curriculum. So questions?
Okay. Committee questions? Ms. Gittleson?
So this is part comment, part question. I'm the parent of a fourth grader and a second grader at the Pierce Elementary School, and I, my fourth grader never tells me anything, so I don't really know much about what's happening there, but it has been truly like amazing to watch my second grader and his friends engage in this curriculum this year. I think they're a group that has like a really special chemistry. They have an amazing teacher, but I had the opportunity to go on their field trip with them to the Harvard Natural History Museum, which came towards the end of their unit about fossils and curiosities, which is what it's called. And they were like literally, you would have thought they were at Disney World. They were so excited, running around. Like, I had to like, I kept being like, you can look at the exhibit. You don't just have to like find every fossil, every, I mean, it was truly, it was pretty amazing. I've said this to Dr. Homan, like I, when I started hearing about this, I don't think I really understood what deeper learning is. Watching my second grader has taught me a lot about it, and, and so I just wanted to pass that along. My fourth grader, who doesn't tell me very much, I did receive an email earlier this month that I think, I'm guessing is the email that that hardy parent was responding to, which was, it came from Dr. Ford Walker, and it was a detailed description of their upcoming unit, which is the American Revolution. And I mean, it was, it's a really great email, but it's the only one of that kind I've received over the course of the year, and I sort of was curious about, is that, you know, are we, are we gonna, should we be expecting more communication like that? You know, I guess, just a little bit more about that and, and why, why now? I mean, it might just be that you just got there. But I'm curious about that communication and what parents can expect along those lines.
Sure. That's a great question. So I think, yes, you can expect more communication like that moving forward. I think this year, we were all trying to wrap our brains around the curriculum, and so I was not out ahead as much as I would like to be in terms of sending, you know, general communications around. Here's what you can expect in kindergarten. Here's what you can expect in first grade, second grade, third grade. That particular communication also came because within that particular unit in fourth grade, the students use some primary source documents, and within the primary source documents, there is some language that was typical during that time that we wanted to ensure that parents were aware, that students, you know, were, that, that that language was a part of the curriculum. And so we wanted to give a sort of a heads up about that, and also a detailed explanation as to how we were supporting that work through this particular unit.
Okay.
That being said, 100%, like I envision, you know, at the start of the year, you know, a kindergarten letter going out so that parents can see like at the start of the year, kindergartners build background knowledge about, and first grade and second grade and so on, so that parents are more in the loop around that piece.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Thank you. This is really informative and helpful. My question may actually be more for Dr. Homan or Dr. Ford Walker. So I think we were sunsetting tools. Have we total, for kindergarten, have we totally done, you know, what? And this may be a future discussion. I just don't know where we're at with that.
Yeah. The answer is yes. I think, I'm having some mic issues over here.
Just don't move.
There we go. So the answer is yes, that K to five, the expectation is that all of our K to five teachers are fully implementing the EL education curriculum. That being said, there are areas in the curriculum that some of our teachers are still trying to plan, trying to connect some of the prior experiences of students to the new curriculum. So what I mean by that is that in kindergarten in particular, and also I believe in, there's another grade, you guys, please help me out with this, but there are some areas that some of the teachers believe some of the curriculum may not necessarily address. So in particular, in kindergarten, what are the skills?
So particularly in kindergarten, we, some of the teachers would like to bring in writing a little bit earlier than where it shows up in the EL curriculum, so that's where they have brought in maybe some pieces that they had used prior. But that is alongside the EL curriculum, not in place of.
And also, we wanted our educators to go through a year of full implementation because our EL curriculum providers were very clear that the writing does happen, that the skills that our teachers felt like our students were missing, that they are actually taught those skills during the year, and it didn't necessarily align with what our teachers were used to using. So we asked folks to go through the year, let's see how it goes, and then at the end of the year, decide if we want to actually implement Heger, what's the curriculum?
The Tools of the Mind.
Thank you. Tools of the Mind, to go alongside EL curriculum.
Okay. I guess the things I'm especially wondering about are like the self-efficacy and there were, like a lot of executive function stuff that came with tools. We don't have to have that discussion now. This is, I think I would at some point like to, but that's.
Do you want to share a little bit about how some of the SEL and like executive function pieces are built into EL? Because it's similarly structured.
Yes. So one of the great things, and Maria and Beth, you can speak to this too, but one of the great things about the EL curriculum is that Module Block is, like, has a very specific structure. So students know what to expect. And then alongside of that, there are the learning targets that are posted every day. And so students have the opportunity to unpack the learning target with their teacher so that they know exactly like what the skill is that they're, or the target is that they're, that they're working towards. But they also have the opportunity to, to like return to that target multiple times, to think about like, how is this going? What do I need as a student? One of the foundational skills around, around the EL education curriculum is really building student agency and voice within their own learning. And so there's protocols in place to do that, and there's other structures in place to do that. And I think, you know, the first year of implementation is always, is sort of like learning those alongside. And so I feel like as we've watched the year kind of go, go on, we've seen teachers getting more comfortable and digging in a little bit deeper around those particular skills. And so we do see more of those like SEL skills and other things that may have been a part of the Tools curriculum come through.
I can speak a little bit about this as well. So in every single grade level, no, what grade level you are, there's a component of SEL in EL. So they have certain vocabulary they're teaching the kids throughout the curriculum, and it starts as early as kindergarten and first grade. If you go into, I'll often go into a first grade classroom, and I'll hear the kids talking to each other and say things like, I'm really, I'm really persevering right now. I mean, I'll hear, I'll hear, like yesterday, well, maybe a couple days ago, I heard, I came to the classroom and one of the kindergartners said to me, Ms. Amato, do you think this is high-quality work? We're supposed to be doing high-quality work. And even today in first grade, they were drawing feathers as part of their bird unit, and they were supposed to do like a detailed scientific drawing. And so, you know, kids would call me over and say, is there anything else that I should, you know, be specifically putting in? They're using like vocabulary, like, that's amazing. And they learn like words like compassion, they learn cooperation. And it's through part of the curriculum, pretty much in almost every closing in a lot of the lessons, particularly younger grades, it comes up in the older grades, they talk about a particular skill that they were supposed to try during a lesson. So for example, they might have been working on collaboration. So they'll actually get together and have the kids turn and talk and say how they collaborated well today, and then they share it with the group. And they'll continue to do this over and over again throughout the grade. So by the time they get to fifth grade, you know, they really are doing a lot of self-reflection and a lot of self-assessment because they're taught in EL that they are leaders of their own learning, that they're responsible for, for learning as well, and have that agent, giving that agency to the kids. And it's pretty incredible to see the work that has been done this year, the students and the teachers.
Thank you.
Ms. Exton?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. It was really interesting, and I have a few questions, but before, I just, I want to sort of re-highlight the level of support that we, we gave to all of you in, in rolling out a new curriculum. It is such a huge undertaking to, for an entire K to five to roll out a new curriculum all at, all at once. I know two grades piloted it the previous year, but like really, like the entire school. And so I think that, you know, having the EL implementation specialist role, the fact that already every elementary school has a coach who has been coaching the teachers, and so there, you know, some might have been new, but like the relationship that a coach has with those classroom teachers makes a huge difference in, in some of those pieces you were talking about where teachers feeling a little vulnerable, like if they were in a, in a building where they knew their coach already, like that's going to support them. And, and then the consultant from EL, I just, I, every district does not roll out a curriculum like that, and I think it's just, I would like to acknowledge the work that you all did, that our administration did, you know, and that this community and the taxpayers, you know, put into, to supporting this rollout. I think it's tremendous. My two questions, one is just in terms of this continued support, you know, you talked a lot about teachers continuing on. What, what plans do you have as new teachers are hired into the district?
So we have a couple of different structures in place to support new teachers. I think one of the things that we're really thinking about and talking about as a coach team is like instead of, like this year, a goal was really just to like support the whole building as much as possible. But I think as we think about new teachers coming on, I think it's a twofold approach, one of which is like concentrating support so that they feel like they have the resources, the materials, the modeling, the co-teaching, the planning piece in place. And I will just say that we have, we have some great teams that really support their new teachers as they come on board, like teaching teams, so I think that there's that piece too. But then we also have like such an incredibly strong mentorship program in the Arlington Public Schools that I feel like this is an opportunity where, you know, we can also continue to leverage our teacher leadership, which feels really important during a curriculum rollout time too, so that we have like the coach in place, we have the team planning in place, which is a structure that is in place already in the Arlington Public Schools, and then we also have this very strong mentoring program. And so we, I know the principals think really strategically about pairing their new teachers with their mentors, and that's just like another avenue too that we use.
Thank you. And then this is less of a question and more of a sort of comment in future presentations, but it, it would be really helpful at some point to hear how sort of the foundational skills go along. I know there's like the All Block and the Foundations Block.
Skills Block, yeah.
And then sort of what programs are being used there? You know, I'm thinking, I feel like I'm familiar with K to two, I'm more thinking like three, four, and five, like grammar, spelling, how that fits in with this, not, not tonight, but just sort of something.
I can just speak to it very quickly.
Okay, that'd be great.
That in grades three through five, there is, during their, during their regular Module Block as well as their All Block, there's work in grammar, there's work in usage. And so like during a lesson, they like, I know, like right now, I think it's first grade, they're learning, you know, they're even learning about, like even like nouns, verbs. They're, they're learning in upper grades, they're learning about pronouns last week. So they're, it's right embedded in the curriculum, so they might look at a piece of writing and have to identify words or, and then they're also editing and revising their work, and on their checklists that they use to, to assess their own work, there will be like usage of grammar and editing, revising. So it's definitely built in as well.
I would also just add that in third grade, we are continuing to use the Foundations Program as part of our All Block.
Thank you.
Seeing none? Super Ten?
I just, Ms. Exton said most of what I was going to say in terms of a comment, but this is work that takes, in, in many places, six years to do, that this incredible team has managed in two and a half. And so it is at warp speed that we have transformed what ELA instruction looks like in the district. And some of the things that we didn't talk about tonight, but are part of that, are schedules in buildings, and practices around inclusion in buildings, and belief systems around how we go about differentiating in our schools. So that you can do a rich curriculum that sets a really high ceiling in its tasks for students, and allows all students a way in to really rich, exciting, engaging, grade-level content so that they're very excited to go to a museum and look at a whole lot of fossils. And so I just want to say kudos to, first of all, Christina, this is your first year, so welcome! Well done! And, and kudos. And kudos to the team because it takes unity of vision, a lot of support from the seven of you, and a lot of willingness to try on new things and be vulnerable in order to make work like this happen to the level of success that it has happened this year. And I'm really very proud to lead a lot of that work and to have been responsible for providing whatever resource we could in the form of specialists or fantastic leaders and coaches. But we're really off to a spectacular start with this, and that's a testament to what I know is a very real daily grind for all of you. So thank you so much for being here tonight because you have to go do it for one more day before you get a weekend.
I will tell you, as a former central office person who's been in the middle of a bunch of curriculum adoptions, and I've been in the middle of some good ones, and I've been in the middle of some train wrecks, I really admire the strategic planning and thought that was put into rolling this out in cooperation with the teachers so that you're moving it forward aggressively, but not in a manner that is going to go to overwhelm the staff, and that you've provided the supports and been able to build it into the teaching day. So that's really essential for the successful implementation. If you don't have the support, if you don't have the coaching, if you don't let teachers ease on into it, no matter how good the curriculum is, it's not going to happen really well. And from what I hear in the community, that the people are loving this stuff. I mean, it's moving forward well, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Class dismissed.
Back class.
Go home.
It's time for math class.
Now we go to math. Yeah, yeah. So now we bring on our math people. Super Ten.
Dr. Ford Walker.
Okay, good evening again. I'm pleased to introduce our Director of the Mathematics and Computer Science Department, Mrs. Octavia Bronner. Prior to this school year, Ms. Bronner served as the interim Director of the department. And prior to Ms. Bronner's work as the interim Director, she was a classroom teacher at Odison Middle School and at Arlington High School. Prior to working in those roles, she worked as a chemical engineer. Throughout Ms. Bronner's short tenure as leader of the department, she has prioritized engaging with families, educators, students, and other stakeholders, learning about past and current department practices, learning about the experiences of students, families, and staff, supporting educators, and forming connections with educators and leaders outside of APS in order to learn about local best practices. Ms. Bronner deeply values listening, learning, and supporting educators in creating learning conditions that promote the growth and success of all learners. I'm excited to welcome Ms. Bronner this evening to share and give an update on some of the work of the department, and I also want to publicly thank Ms. Bronner for her leadership.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ford Walker, for that very kind introduction. Hello, everyone. So on the agenda, when I was asked how much time, I never really know, I'm not very good at monitoring, and I sort of look at the number of slides and see. So hopefully I can be more concise than my initial plan. So we'll start with some missions and goals and thinking about what do we value in Arlington? What do we value as a department? Some updates on the high school pathways that have transpired this year, some other updates that have been happening in other spaces in the department this year, naming our challenges. And I'm going to address that word later when that slide comes up. I want to change it a little bit. And then thinking about sort of beginning at the end, like what is our, what are we thinking ahead to, right? What is our plan moving forward, not just for next year, but sort of thinking about what would that look like if we extended it beyond? Talking a little bit about this diamond model we were introduced to, I just want to share that with you. And then some possibilities we've been thinking about for moving forward in those middle school pathways, and then some next steps, and of course, questions. So just thinking about the mission statement for the district, I always come back to this when I'm thinking about some of the work that we're doing or what the planning looks like, and really highlighting what's in here, what feels like, where am I living right now when I'm working with staff or thinking about students or working with other administrators? So for me, right now, thinking about like learning opportunities for students, that's kind of where my mind is right now, and sort of thinking about high expectations for all students and making sure everybody has access to that. Those goals are reflected, that mission statement is reflected through our goals for the math department, really thinking about cultivating deep understanding for students, like letting them really grapple with problems and problem solving, not just procedural skills, but not throwing those out completely, knowing that there is space and place for those and they do have value. Thinking about curiosity and encouraging that critical thinking, establishing a growth mindset for students, staff, and admin across the board. And then also, I appreciated that Ms. Amato was talking about collaboration because really thinking about that, that's something that we really value in the math department, is getting students to talk math with each other and discuss math and their ways of thinking and how they're approaching problems together. So when we think about, so for, in terms of thinking about level and leveling and rigorous instruction, on the left, really anchoring this in what we value as a district, when we talk about that growth, belonging, joy, and empowerment, giving students agency, making math applicable to things that they know, they can see, they can, they can touch or hold in their hands, helping them establish relationships with their peers and their teachers, and then learning what it means to have experienced productive struggle and find growth through that experience. So in terms of the commitments, this challenge by choice, I still feel like this feels a little bit on the new side for both our students and staff with really like, what does this mean? How do we support this? And thinking about letting students and families think about what's, what's the best option for you next year? Maybe it's not where you are now, maybe you're whatever course you're in now, whatever level, giving students and families the option to make the decision if they want to change that level next year. This gives students agency over their learning. It puts them in the driver's seat of it. They're not, I lost my train of thought, I apologize. But also recognizing that there is a lot of importance in having that strong foundational knowledge, those core concepts that we that we know in math are really needed before moving moving forward to subsequent courses. And in terms of flexible interventions, in the elementary schools, we have a math interventionist at every school. And the scheduling at the elementary schools, how that operates can be a little different than at the secondary. And really thinking about, there's flexibility in the interventionist at every round for every term, thinking about what groups of students am I going to work with this term? And that doesn't translate necessarily at the secondary level because of the structures. And so we're looking at that and saying, can it translate? Can we think of a way to overcome that rigidity of scheduling to allow students to access intervention when they need it and when they're feel like they're ready to move on, allowing them to do that as well? And so just a quick review before I talk about the pathways. The state frameworks has these standard pathways set out. So we have the grade level standards, so the courses are not called, the content area is listed by grade six, seven, and eight, it's not, doesn't have a name. And then once they move beyond grade eight, we have that traditional Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II, and then the state identifies Precalculus and Calculus as advanced courses. And then for the high school right now, this has been traditionally the pathways that students have had access to. Some students come in ninth grade taking Algebra I and completing up through Precalculus if that's what they choose by 12th grade, they have that option. There's the accelerated pathway, so students who are choosing to do the accelerated seventh grade class will be prepared to take Algebra I in eighth grade and then enter high school in geometry. And that sets them on the trajectory to get to Calculus if they would like in 12th grade. And then the students who were part of the bypass program will enter high school in Algebra II, they get to Calculus by 11th grade. So those have been the set pathways for the past number of years. One of the things that we've been grappling with from feedback from families, feedback from students, thinking about what the feedback from the staff, questions you all have asked in other meetings, was how are we more flexible in those pathways so that students, when they feel ready to take on additional challenge, or if they have a goal in mind for what they would like to accomplish prior to graduating, we're opening, we're opening gates, not closing gates. And so some of the things we were able to do kind of in the immediate right now are laid out on this on this slide. So and some students are, there's many students who are starting to take advantage of these. So previously, we allowed students to double up in geometry and Algebra II before I came into the role, that was something that had been established. And then I was asked, could they do this in ninth grade? Yeah, they can do it in ninth grade, and families are reaching out about it. And one of the things that I see is an important role for me is to make sure that they just understand, like when you're doing that, what's the byproduct of that, right? Like what are the natural consequences of that happening? So they can double up in ninth grade if they would like, that puts them on the path to get to Calculus junior year. We have summer precalc that we've said we've opened that up for rising 11th and 12th graders. Previously, it was only allowed for rising 12th grade to get them to Calculus. So these were some immediate ways we could be flexible in our pathways to open that up, at least for next year moving forward. But over the course of next year, we want to continue to think about what are other ways in which we might allow access to these advanced courses as students feel like this is where they want to go. Oh, and then one piece on the bottom, Dr. M, is that what's interesting when this is shared with students, I think that there's not a full understanding from their perspective, and this is where I learned that this is what I need to do moving forward for next year prior to registration, is when students see this, this is not an expected pathway. We're not telling them they need to do this. And so I think there needs to be, even though we have this, there needs to be a lot of education around what does this mean? This might not be the right choice for all students, and that there's plenty, there's so many other courses they could take in lieu of doubling up or in lieu of getting to Calculus by 11th grade. We have a really rich set of science courses, we have a whole four levels of, or four, a sequence of four, architecture courses that really dig in and get them in the into the science and engineering and art mindset. We have computer science classes, so there's a lot of options for students. And so the doubling up might not be right, depending on their goals, because they might want to explore and receive that math enrichment in other ways and other and other and other courses. Thank you. So some of our updates, we've been working as a department along with building leaders and other staff to try to embed some professional learning this year from the middle school up through the high school, leveraging that instructional leadership team time and department time to start to introduce and talk about and unpack some things around UDL practices, what does it mean to to give grade level assignments and have high expectations for all students? What does that look like? What might that feel like? What might be our concerns around that or areas where we want to grow and talk more about it? Maximizing instructional time, like really thinking about how do I start a lesson and how do I end a lesson so that students walk away feeling like, oh, I understood the goal of all this work I just did today, and I have a piece that I can take with me? And then also thinking about how do we support kids in looking at and experiencing deeper learning in math? And then also some extension work, but not wanting to equate deeper learning with extension, wanting all students to be able to access that deeper learning. K-12, some of the professional development that's been happening has been around this book called Building Thinking Classrooms. It's 14 Teaching Practices for Enhancing Learning, and it's by Dr. Peter Lilahal. And this book is really having a moment right now. I didn't put, I don't have a slide with the photos, but it's this, it has a, it's far-reaching. It's the across the country and across the world. There's lots of social media groups that have started forming where teachers are connecting across the country, talking about implementing this in their classrooms, sharing success stories. I went to a conference last week where someone presented on this, it's appearing at every every math conference. And so the goal of this is really thinking about how are we getting students thinking in the classroom? What does that look like? What tasks are they getting? How are they working together and where are they working in the in the classroom? And so thinking about tasks, what are tasks that we're giving them? They have a low floor, so everybody has an entry point into the task, and a high ceiling so that they, students can take this to a level of complexity that is self-driven. They want more challenge, or they want to take it to a level that feels more challenging for them. And then there's this, this, he uses in the book, he talks about open middle questions, which was actually new to me, I had not heard of this phrase before, and thinking about a problem that might have a single answer, but has so many approaches to it, and sort of thinking about a way that students can share and learn that there's not just one way to get from point A to point B. And so I have an example of what might be a thinking task, and this is an Algebra I question. And it talks about Mr. Hart preparing lunches and putting a bag of pretzels, that's the same number of pretzels in every bag with every lunch. And you'll notice there's no question in this. So what I would do is I might, a teacher might give this to a class and say, have students first talk about, sorry, the pun, unpacking, unpacking the problem, making sense of it. And I might not even put the table up. I might start with just the problem and supporting that sense-making and asking them, what questions could you ask? What information would you want to know? And then giving them the table and saying, what questions could you ask now? And we could scaffold, we could start with questions such as, how many pretzels per lunch are there? We could ask, how many pretzels were in the container initially? Or how many lunches could you make with the full bin of pretzels? So there's all these different types of questions. And most students could at least start in and start having some question, they have a question, I'm sure they have a question, and giving them the agency to sort of own the thinking. And so one of the other pieces of this that you'll see in the photos, and it's all the smiley faces, is that in addition to the task, we're thinking about how are students being grouped together? And Dr. Lilahal really advocates for visibly randomized grouping, meaning every time the students are working on this ta, a task like this, it doesn't have to happen every day or every lesson, but you're visibly randomizing students. This works to, you know, dismantle social, social barriers. It makes the students know, oftentimes when they're placed in a group, they might know that why they're in that group. And so they come into the room thinking, I'm going to be a follower and not a leader. And so when it's randomized, it takes that away and gives them the ownership. And we're like, you could work with anyone for 10 minutes, right? And you don't have to work with them beyond the 10 minutes on this task, tomorrow it might be someone new. And then where they're working is they're doing vertical work, so they're up at a board, and it's a non-permanent surface, so dry erase boards. And there's, the research behind this shows that students are more willing to take a risk if they know that their work is not permanent. If they can erase it quickly and start over, they're more willing to try something and just see what happens and see where it goes. And so there's, the elementary math coaches have been leading PD with the teachers, K-5, in supporting them, learning the, learning about this as another tool that they can use in their classroom to promote engagement, promote thinking, promote collaboration. Both the middle and high school have committees around this where they're talking and unpacking it. And the committees at the, at both the middle and the high school have extended beyond the math department. There's a lot of science teachers who started participating in this last year and are starting to grow this. And I think there's a few ELA teachers, I'm not really sure how far-reaching it goes, I'm not part of the committee, but it's going beyond math for sure. So they're learning how to apply it in other ways. Some other upcoming professional learning will be around the curriculum development in six through eight, where we use the Amplify Desmos Math. So this coming year, Amplify fully owns Desmos Math. And so they're a curriculum provider, and what they've done is they've taken the curriculum and they've added other elements to enhance that curriculum. And what I mean is they're adding additional resources. So there's resources for students who might need supports, there are enrichment resources, they take a lot of feedback from teachers. They're constantly working to, to get teacher feedback and modify their curriculum as they go. And so they've, they've replaced some of the lessons, they've reworked some of the lessons. Um, and so there's a lot of tools in this that are different than when we first rolled, when the curriculum was first rolled out in the middle school prior to, when I arrived, sometime after we came back fully in person. Um, and so we want to make sure that all of the teachers have access and know how to use these tools and where they are and what advantages they bring to them to support their students in learning. So we have, um, PD lined up for a full program overview, and then a second one after they've had a little time to digest some of that in terms of strengthening, how do we use these resources for planning? And so those two sessions are in the spring as a primer to think about using this curriculum, fully integrating it into the classes in six through eight next year. So we're kicking off a series of community events, um, for math, uh, in April and May. And we're starting with, uh, Community Conversations at Audison, um, on April 15th. And so all of this, this is the first time we're announcing it, uh, more broadly, and so more information will be coming out around this. And then in, um, that Monday after April break, we'll do a screening of the documentary film Counted Out and have a panel discussion to accompany that. Um, I saw the documentary back in November, and it's very compelling and very powerful about how math is power, and it's the great sorter, um, of people. And it can mean the difference between having success and not having success. And there's a math teacher that brought this to the community in the high school for their, um, their workshops, their inclusion workshops. The first one was this week and the second one is next week. And so she brought this screening for students who would like to use that as their workshop, and they're viewing it over the two days, so they haven't seen the full screening yet. And then, um, hosting a district-wide community conversation event, and then a Gibbs conversation. So those, those, the full range of these community events is really rooted in the work that's laid out in the strategic plan around looking at leveling and tracking. Um, it says specifically at the middle school level, but I definitely think, like, we can think about how that plays out once we get to the high school, um, as well. Um, and so part of this is, we said in there, page 27, that we were going to start community conversations, um, around getting feedback from the community around leveling and tracking and thinking about, um, how to support the work moving forward. What does that look like? All right, something a little lighter, some more photos. So the, um, elementary math coaches at Bishop and at Pierce have been hosting some math mornings for families, um, and the turnout has been, uh, remarkable. It's been really amazing to see families come. They start, the coaches start by introducing, um, sort of, what does it mean to think mathematically as a first grader or a second grader? Uh, and then introduces some of the, the concepts that students have been learning, and then where they are now, and what, what they're going to be doing with their students when they get to the classrooms. Um, last week, um, four of our math coaches presented at the Association of Teachers of Mathematics in Massachusetts at that conference, um, on building fact fluency in upper elementary. Um, they were one of the last sessions of the day, so we were a little nervous about sort of if people were willing to sort of hang around, and it was, it was, there was no seats available. It was a packed room. So there was a lot of interest in this session, and there was a lot of good feedback. Um, yeah, so that was a success moment for them for sure. So I said I wanted to think about this word, challenges. I, I feel like thinking about it more as ongoing, always ongoing work and reflection, um, around what is our access to intervention for students? How do we give them access when they need it? When they're ready for something more, how do we provide that? Um, what is our own understanding of the student experience? How are we collecting and getting that information? Um, what are, what are mindsets and how are we using assessments? How are we providing students with feedback and allowing them to reflect? Um, what are our mindsets about grading? And then, and then about student ability content, and then those focal groups? And when I say "our," I literally mean all of ours, the full range of the community, students, staff, administrators. Like, I'm always thinking about, like, where am I sitting in my mindset when I say something, right? Am I, am I sitting in some level of bias, and do I need to think about my viewpoint and, and think about what am I bringing to the table? Um, all of this to say is, the goal really is for students to get access to the math learning that they need and the math learning that they deserve. Planning ahead. This is the last year of our bypassing program, but knowing that, thinking ahead to if we're no longer offering this as one mode of really accelerating, what's the response to that? And so this coming year is really a planning year for us around that, to thinking, what will the following year look like when we don't have that bypassing in place? Um, and how does this impact that full six through eight middle school, uh, range of math for students? Um, and so on some of the slides in a moment, there's some ideas that we have around what we're thinking about, what are some things that we might be trying to pilot? And then also thinking about alignment and implementation, and that comes back to that Amplify Desmos curriculum of like implementing that and supporting the teachers in understanding, like, that vertical alignment and the, and the resources that are available to them. Um, one of the things that was approved in the budget was to get a middle school instructional math coach that can really be, um, pivotal in this work and supporting that work, um, someone who can be down, who can be in the buildings with the teachers, um, daily, um, learning, supporting instruction, supporting practices, um, being, really being that thought partner as they move through something where they're bringing in curriculum, um, that feels a little, that feels this similar to what they're doing, but also has a different feel to it. Um, and then what would a new middle school pathway look like the following year? And that's, that's the question that we're, we're just starting to tackle. And so I think something important to just make sure we, moving forward, like clear, like make sure it's clear, is that nothing's been determined yet. These are all ideas that we're starting with, and there's plenty of things, we don't know what we don't know yet. There might be other, other things we want to see, um, if it would be feasible to pilot. And then thinking about, um, where are our students in all this? How do we help them know that they have options? How do we develop those options for them? And options in a way that are grounded in our mission. High expectations, rigorous coursework for all students. Something that Dr. Homan and myself and other leaders learned at a DUCY, what was it? It was a session on piloting something.
It was the.
The deeper learning, yeah. Um, we, this was our big takeaway from that, was thinking about, when we think about tiered instruction, we know that tier one lives in the classroom for all students. But thinking about, when we talk about tier two instruction, I know from myself, I automatically go to students that need intervention in a way that supports them getting to grade level work. And so this diagram really, um, challenges that mindset of saying, yes, and, what about those other groups outside of tier one that are ready for more? Or need support in experiencing enrichment, or move accelerating if they're ready to accelerate? And so we're, we have this in the back of our mind as we think about those flexible pieces of intervention and, um, acceleration or advancement. I guess I want to say advancement.
And I think, can I just add?
Please.
It says there at the bottom, which I feel like is a really important way of thinking about tiered intervention and something that we need to incorporate into an MTSS model that we need, we're going to be working on as well, is that everybody lives everywhere on this diamond at some point. Everyone at some point needs intensive intervention in all directions, in something. And so this, like, movement needs to be relatively fluid. So the framework is designed to sort of travel the notion that any one student is in any one spot, like, permanently, or like, is, is placed there. And I think you mentioned focal groups a minute ago. Focal groups and this diamond really don't have anything to do with each other, except insofar as students in our focal groups are all over this. Um, regardless, uh, it's just that focal groups are about opportunities allowed, um, not wh- where you are or what kind of tiered space you might be in academically at any one point. Keep, sorry, I totally interrupted you. Keep going.
That was great. Thank you. So thinking about that is kind of in the background for moving forward. In terms of what are some possibilities? There's the idea of leveraging WIN in a flexible way. What if we leveled sixth grade math? Or offering somehow a 7A with Math 6? Or doubling up in eighth grade? So there's these things that we're just saying, like, what if? What if? Um, these ideas, right, are new, they're underdeveloped and subject to significant revision, uh, because as we start talking and learning and thinking about what, maybe what other districts are doing, or what research is out there, uh, can help us formulate whether that idea sort of sends us in a direction that doesn't align with our mission. And so in, in terms of thinking about WIN flexibly, um, this would not be exclusive to math, so the other content areas are on there, but I just highlight math because, um, that's what we're here for right now. Um, it's just thinking about, if all students are receiving Math 6, could we use WIN to sort of do that advancement, like a Math 6A group? Or a group that's exploring more in Math 6 and doing a lot more deeper digging with where they are? And then those students that still need some support to make sure they're finding success in Math 6, we might have a math support, uh, piece of that WIN block. And the same would be true for the other content areas as needed. Um, there's, there's challenges, some things to consider with this. Um, scheduling is a huge, is a huge piece. It sets a structure, um, that can be, once it's set, it doesn't allow some, for a lot of flexibility, uh, moving forward throughout the year. Uh, but thinking about, if we want to do this, then we really do need every student to have access to WIN. That might mean some adjustments to advisory, it might mean additional staffing to, to support the WIN blocks. What is, what does tier one instruction look like so that once we have that developed, uh, robustly, like, that will help navigate, help students navigate where they want to be in WIN? And maybe in quarter one, it's in a different place than where they are in quarter two. What are the assessments that we're using to measure student mastery and student progress? Um, and maybe we could use WIN to sort of support some of those, um, elements. And then just implementing this, right, for the staff and for the students is, is a change and does require, um, some front-loading. And then, of course, other things we haven't thought of yet. Um, possibility two would be leveling Math 6 coursework, similar to how we do it in seventh grade. Um, this requires changes around thinking about our scope and sequence. Um, in seventh grade, the seventh grade team, they all do the Math 7A and the Math 7. They have sections of both. That avoids creating cohorts, um, or that avoids, um, dividing up LCs by ability level. Um, so thinking ahead to what that might look like, um, in sixth grade. What other staffing would we need for this? Um, do we need more interventionists, special educators? Um, and then thinking about, how do we, how do we find out if this is working or if this is needed? And that's part of that, starting those community conversations, is to, to understand where, where families are in this and students. Sorry, I wasn't expecting this slide. Um, also thinking about, oh, thank you. Um, for possibility three, could we do some coursework that's in addition to the math, the eighth grade coursework? What would that look like? Would it be outside of school? Would it be the elective? How do we provide access for students who want that? And then, of course, there's always, when we start offering additional coursework, there's staffing to, um, to be considered. Um, and then when we're asking teachers to do anything additional, we're thinking, making sure that we're aligning with the, um, the AA contract. All right, so some of our next steps are to continue to develop a, a deeper understanding of those grade level standards and how they align and how the curriculum fits together, um, thinking about the traject, the trajectory through a grade and then through the grades from one to the other. And getting some data, we really need some data to think about where we, where are we right now? What are the cohorts, what's, what has success look for, look like for them going forward? And so data around assessments, of course, but also data around where are they? What is their thinking? What has been their path, um, as they've moved through? Students who've participated in the bypassing, students who have not, um, what has their experience has been like for them? Uh, we definitely want to partner with families, we want to partner with students. Um, I mean, this is their education. And we want to partner with the staff and make sure that everybody feels like they have a seat at the table to be part of the, the voice, the decision-making, the thinking about, the exploring, the brainstorming. And then structurally thinking about schedules, what are the pathway options, continuing to explore those ideas beyond the ones that we already have. And then really trying to settle on a pathway for 26, 27. Thank you. Any, no other questions?
Okay, we go to the committee. Ms. Morgan.
Hi, thank you for this. So I, add a couple of things. Um, I think I'm going to start from like most concrete and then move up.
Perfect, perfect.
So, Dr. Homan, I don't know if you can go back to the, um, slide. Actually, you know what? I don't need it, it, because I can, I can be concrete even without the slide. So I think that you spoke, um, and I appreciated this, about the challenge of supporting students in making that decision to double up, right, when they come to AHS? Because, so, first of all, the flexibility within the pathways at AHS, um, is a, a huge change that has been made very quickly, um, and it's really, it's super important, right? And, and largely has been implemented, right? You, it, you can kind of snap your fingers a little bit and make it happen, because all of these courses exist, right? It's just making sure that they're structured to the schedule. I think what you touched upon is that doubling up in ninth grade piece, right? And I would say that the weak link there is that, um, the kids are not, they're not here in the building when they're making those course selections, right? And the Audison is amazing, and the teachers are fantastic. It is not their building, right? The, the eighth grade teachers at Audison know something about ninth grade math, obviously, right? But like, they don't, they're, they don't live it in the way that the teachers do here. And so it's harder for them to guide students to making those selections, because it's jumping an entire building, right? It's a totally different place, it's a totally different level. So whatever we do to support ninth graders in choosing their electives, I mean, we need to do, we need to do more about that as a district than, than just in math, right? Is supporting those, those eighth graders in making those ninth grade course decisions. So, um, I will say that the course selection process at AHS this year was far more mindful. There was a lot more communication that I got as a parent. It sounds like teachers met with kids, talked to them about what their choices were, and, and it, it protracted the process whereby they chose their classes, because there was a whole week that was dedicated to like, at some point this week, talk to kids about what classes they can take next year. What a great idea, right? Uh, because it was built in for every kid in every subject. So it does seem like a lot of that work is happening. That eighth to ninth grade transition is a really tough one, and so the fact that we have opened up the ability to double up in ninth grade in math is great. And I can imagine that those eighth graders are perhaps a little bit uncertain. And I'm glad that they're talking to you, that's wonderful, and maybe that's the right thing initially, because then you can guide your team in terms of how to like best support them. But I, I'm not surprised that that's a very tricky piece. So, um, I think, you know, the, the work is, is great. I, the challenge, the challenge for those of us who are living in middle school right now, right? I have a sixth grader right now, and, uh, he is not doing a ton of sixth grade math. And he is not doing a ton of sixth grade math. He's doing some, right? But the, a lot of the work that's coming home is, is, is not what I would, not what the standards would necessarily indicate he should be doing in sixth grade. So, what do you say to those of us who are living that, right? We're not getting the sort of experience of like fossils, right? There's no, we're not getting, and I get that like fossils versus like the distributed property, like, I don't know. I mean, I would love for my kid to come home.
My kids would be really into that, too.
I would love for my kid to come home and be like, hey, we learned this cool thing in math today. It was awesome, right? And so, how do we keep? How do we keep engaging in this as we live through this with our kids, right? Because I'm pretty, like, I, I know you're going to get there. I'm very confident that you're the right person and this team is the right group. Like, I, I know that, that you're going to get there. But what about those of us who are living it now? What, what can you tell us, me, that makes me feel better about where I'm at right now? Because like, my kid's in sixth grade now, right? So he's not, he's my youngest kid, thank God, right? All the rest of them are through. So, he's not going to benefit from WIN necessarily. Maybe at the Odysseum, but it's going to be this kind of, you know, we're learning how to do that, which is great. He's not going to benefit from a change to Math 6. So, how do I keep thinking that somehow this is going to help my family? Like this work that's being done?
So, I think I hear a couple of things is maybe sort of right now, what does that feel like and look like? And then, moving forward. And one of the things that I've worked with the staff on is saying, we want to, we want to look at our scope and sequence. And so, Dr. Holman and I talked about and have said, we're not asking the teachers to fully throw out everything that they've worked hard to design over the last couple of years and using this year. But thinking, when you go into a unit or a lesson, do, do these lessons align with the sixth grade frameworks? And so, that has been an ask to say, we're not asking you to change everything about your scope and sequence mid-year, but we are asking you to do grade level standards. So that ask has been, has been made. And the, there has been feedback from teachers where they, they've shared with me lessons that they've taken out or reworked and looked at the standards to make sure that those are aligned. I think this feels sticky for teachers because I think one of the things that's hard for them is it then feels like, can we not do any kind of review? Or can we not ask any questions from fourth or fifth grade? And so, I think supporting them and understanding like, they still come, they're still, they're still the experts of this, right? They're coming in, their goal is to support students in learning math. And not breaking that confidence in what they're doing and saying things like, yeah, you, you can still use a fourth grade question to start a lesson as a way of just previewing and say, remember when you learned this or remember this skill? We're going to be using this skill today. And so, sometimes those questions don't always align with sixth grade, but the goal is for the full lesson or the majority of class to live in the sixth grade standards. I don't.
Which is great.
So I think.
And then the question is, so, right. So, which is, which is good because that, that should be the best.
So then, as a parent, if you were to come to me and say, I don't feel like this is happening, I would first encourage a conversation with the teacher to ask, like, has, is this work happening? What does that look like? This doesn't feel like sixth grade? Can you tell me more about the standard that you're using for this? And then, loop, I can loop in with those conversations and think about supporting the staff in that way. Because they have been using this really well-developed. They spent a lot of time working on this scope and sequence a couple of years ago. And thinking about pivoting immediately from that is, can be very, a very uncomfortable place for, for teachers to live in without being provided the time to work through that and not just throw everything out and think about, what am I going to use in its place?
Understood. And I think we've been here just, you know, we started talking about this pretty extensively in like September, October, and it's now like March, which is, is kind of warp speed from an educate, in an educational like world. I get that, right? Like I, things at my work change real slowly, right? And it's, it's just, it's tricky when you're, you're living it in that kind of, you're living through that, that change is, is tough.
But I will say, moving forward, the, sort of the goal of supporting the staff in doing this is saying, we're taking this curriculum that is aligned with the standards and has this beautiful alignment that every, every lesson is tied to where does this go later? So there's a sixth grade lesson that says, this goes to another sixth grade lesson and goes to three seventh grade lessons. So we see the value of each of those lessons. And having this, teachers have this roadmap of they can see where the, where the lessons lead, how they connect to the standards and how they connect later for learning for students either in that grade level or the next grade level. And so, I think the, the staff is, is on board with doing this. But I think as, as Kooni spoke earlier about the EL implementation, there's always, it's nerve, it's, it's, people are nervous when they don't know what to expect and when it feels like it's something new. What's nice about this is the staff does have a lot of familiarity with the platform and with the curriculum. It's really trying to get at those pieces that have been added in that are designed to support teachers. Teacher moves that are in there that say like, this is how you could support students having discussion around this particular question. Supports for ML learners, supports for students with special education needs. And then, where are the enrichment pieces? And what are the pieces you could use if you're doing some targeted instruction in your class? How could you, how could you structure that, too?
Superintendent.
Dr. Ford Walker.
I just wanted to highlight slide 13 here because Ms. Bronner mentioned this, but I just wanted to kind of bring us back to this. So the current curriculum that our educators are using was a curriculum that the district began using during COVID, correct?
Just after, yeah.
Oh, just after COVID. And it was mainly access, accessible through online learning, an online platform. There have been some changes that have been made with the curriculum, but we also realize our teachers have not been fully trained in how to access those updated changes and how to use the platform in its current capacity, but also the platform to come. Because there's going to be a whole new platform, from my understanding, during the summer. And so, part of the goal on these two training days in April and May are to make sure that our educators know what those changes and updates are to the actual curriculum. And then also, it provides Octavia with an opportunity to kind of reset expectations as the new leader of the department around how to access these tools. And so, there's kind of a shift happening within the department right now around new expectations and different expectations around how to use this curriculum. And also, Octavia is trying to do some work around leading the team in feeling prepared to take on those changes.
So maybe it's seventh grade? Like, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, it, it's, it's hard. It, it, it's hard to be patient when you're, because you have these kids who are in it now, right? And so, it, I, I'm living it currently. And so, I, I really, I support the work that you're doing. I, you, every time you come here to talk to us, you're, you know, 30% more articulate and clear about like, it, it just, it gets better every single time. And I'm, I'm grateful for that. And I'm waiting to see. So I'm seeing like so much up here and then I'm waiting to see it in my house. And, and so, my feedback to you is with, with deep respect and honesty, I don't see it at my house yet. I'm not seeing what you're doing. I'm not seeing this. This isn't coming to my home yet. But when it does, I, I'm going to, I, I'm going to call you up and I'm going to tell you. Because that, that will be when it's real, right? When we see this and it comes home. And, and so, that will be, that's the day I'm really looking forward to. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Carden.
Thank you. So, I know you're intending to do away with the bypass program, but for next year, the, you know, the, we've heard a lot of feedback about the high stakes exam. That entry process has evolved from the way Mr. Coleman first described it, you know, over 10 years ago. Are you planning to adjust it at all for this year to be better, be more clear about the expectations? Are any changes?
What do you mean by the expectations? Because I, so, I have shared more widely information about the program and how families can feel like they can support their child in being prepared. Even just the aspect of sitting and taking an assessment. Resources they can use if they want to start just looking at some sixth grade level questions, MCAS questions. And then also, a little bit just about taking academic risks and sort of a mindset around that. And that this is, for many students, is the first time they've done something like this and it can feel very challenging and very hard and just supporting them through that process. So I'm not sure what else you were, what was part of your question?
I mean, the feedback I've heard in, you know, and as it was originally designed, it's not just getting the answer right. It's showing your work and showing your work in a certain way, not your own creative way of doing things. So I guess, making sure that that is communicated to the families as they sign up to take the test, as they're preparing their student, to help, help prepare their student for the test.
So, yeah, so in the, in that communication, talking about that correct answers, right? Like, they garner credit, but also wanting to see a student's thinking. And I think even that level is hard for students to know what that means. There were some assessments that had paragraphs of information. And so, thinking about, it's not about writing paragraphs. Showing your thinking as if you were explaining it to a classmate or a fourth grader. And then, thinking about allowing for a wider set of explanations and responses. And does, does it demonstrate understanding the math?
And, Dr. Ford Walker.
Octavia, can you talk a little bit about some of the actual technical changes that you are making this year to that whole process? Including communicating to families the intent of the test and what the test is intended to assess for and the process and the actual changing of the test? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we did, we did change the test, obviously, because that assessment is public knowledge. So, wanting to make sure we had a, a test that the goal is to really look at, what are the sixth grade standards? And so, using those standards to design the test, but not necessarily just questions that are just about recall. We want questions about thinking as well. And allowing students to, just like we would in class, demonstrate a variety ways of how they're problem-solving, but making sure it's clear on, on what they're doing. Then, thinking about the threshold being at a similar place to last year, that 85% for students invited. But then, also looking at that range below that, around 75 to 85. And that's, I mean, it, it comes down to sort of thinking about what are the students' work? Spending more time looking at their answers. But then, going beyond that, thinking about talking to the teachers about it. Is there opportunity to revisit information with a student to get clarity on their thinking? And always looking sort of at what available assessment scores there are already, just to get a sense of the type of learning and thinking they've been doing.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Allison Anbi, followed by Mr. Holman.
Thank you. So I'm actually kind of looking, so first, just to tag on to what Mr. Carden said, I think that there is definitely value added in the students being able to explain their work. I mean, I think that being able, math is very important, but if you can't explain what your math means at any level, in any job, you aren't going to be very successful. And so, I think, I, I know that has been, I, I feel like I've heard that concept derided some in the past. And I just think that that is very important. I'm glad that you're making it clear to people that that's true. So that's just an aside. My other questions kind of go on both sides of the middle school. So first, I appreciate that you're looking at the middle school and then beyond path kind of, but I'm just wondering, should we be looking at the whole thing? And I realize this is going to make everybody go crazy because we're just adopting a whole new ELA curriculum and everything. But it just, it feels really weird to me to be going, this is the part people are looking at and shouldn't we be like looking at the whole thing? So that's, and especially if you're like trying to build on things, you know, you need to make sure your foundation is sound first. And so, that's one question. And then, my other question is just, I know in the past, and maybe this is not true anymore, but in the past, that at the high school level, that students with learning challenges or problems accessing some of the curriculum were not, were basically told the way that they are being accommodated is to step down a level. So instead of trying to do honors pre calc, they were told, no, you need to, if, if you can't do this, just kind of in the basic classroom, you have to do, you know, just step down. And I personally don't think that is serving all of our children to their best advantage.
Superintendent.
I'm going to answer this one for, for you to jump in after. Go, no, finish, but.
Okay.
Before you jump in.
Okay. Just that I hope as we are talking about all of this stuff, that we are looking, and I realize you had your diamond thing and, and stuff, but just, I know it's been a problem in the past and I would hope that it is being addressed, especially as we are addressing all these other things, because I don't think it's fair to those children. And, yeah, so.
So, we're doing the whole, the whole thing. We're, this is not about one level of instruction in math in terms of the planning work that we want to do next year. Now, certainly, we need to focus on and think about the place where leveling structurally and schedule-wise begins, but it also doesn't begin there because of exactly what you said after that. Which is that, one of the, if you look at the data and you look at the trends for the bypass class, you don't see that students who are neurodivergent, students with IEPs, students from different language backgrounds, students from different ethnic backgrounds are in that class. And so, that structurally is an access barrier. And that's part of the issue. So whatever we're solving for, it has to solve for precisely what you just said, which is that the answer to, the answer to an appropriate math space for any student has nothing to do with whether or not you're in one of our pre-designated or not necessarily designated focal groups or what, where you might fall on any one of those identity markers or learning markers. As a matter of fact, one of the things we talked, with families we talked to earlier today about is that sometimes what will present as a challenge in learning is actually because a student isn't challenged in their learning. So you might have a student who seems as though they're not engaged, but that's because they are in fact not engaged because they are bored. And so, neurodivergence often can manifest itself or look like a learning challenge that causes a student to perhaps get placed or recommended into a class that isn't appropriate for their learning, that perpetuates the very challenge that they were having that resulted in them being placed or recommended for or believing that they belonged in a particular class. And had they been challenged instead, or had they been provided a different type of task instead, maybe they would have accelerated in their learning. And so, there's, there's a lot of people for whom this is the case. And we know we have students in our schools for whom this is the case. And so, our goal is, in whatever we do, to provide more access through, for more of our students, certainly not to put up new gates. And so, I think that's reflected in some of the immediate work that's been done. You can't change anything about middle school and not have a huge impact on high school because it all moves on up through the system. And you can't address any of what I just said without thinking also about the messages students have received about who they are as learners when they're in elementary school. So, yes. That is the plan for some of this work.
Can, can I respond a little bit?
No.
So, I just want to be clear. I am not as. So I just want to be clear, I am not as concerned about having a bypass for students who need a longer time to understand math and stuff at middle school, but I'm saying when you get to high school, and there are definite levels in classes, that there needs to be some kind of support for students to, who have learning challenges, to take a higher level math class.
We agree.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I'm saying too.
Yeah, you were kind of jumping my stuff in a place that I didn't intend it to be, but that's fine. So, that's all.
Mr. Philman.
Thank you. So my question is, was kind of like what Dr. Allison Hemp, he was saying, isn't to, to adjust the middle school curriculum, isn't there work that has to take place K through sixth, K through sixth grade, K through fifth grade first? Or is that happening at all? Is there sort of?
I think some of the challenge we're experiencing is that we have been doing a ton of work with that, some of that building thinking classrooms at the elementary level.
Yeah.
And that that, there, there may just be some vertical alignment incongruence in terms of practice, that some students are starting to experience if they've been through multiple years now of some of that curriculum, and that, you know, the alignment and coherence you heard about literacy, like we haven't done a reset like that.
Yeah.
With math, that's been sort of comprehensive, messaged and communicated, fully understood by all involved, and we're understanding that that's sort of a reset. It may not be a full, like, we're going to completely remove the curriculum and add this one, or maybe it does need to be that, but it, it's not as sequential as that, I wouldn't say. Have to start at kindergarten and work your way out.
Okay, so you don't have to, so it's sort of like the, I don't know, I'm, I'm using, I'm using this word because it came to mind, it's probably the wrong word, but the sort of bottleneck is somewhere in the, in the way the middle school math curriculum has evolved over the years.
I mean, the structural leveling of mathematics starts at sixth grade.
Okay, and so that, that's where the correction will happen. What, and so my next question is, will there be, are we going to be voting on this, a change in the curriculum in the, in the middle school at some point next year? Is that what we're going to be doing here as a curriculum?
I mean, I'm, go ahead. So the, the curriculum's not changing, it's that it's been updated and enhanced, so it's not a different curriculum, so I don't know if that helps answer your question. I think, to the extent that there would be structural changes that would impact a budget.
Yeah.
That would impact the way students select into coursework, that would impact a high school program of studies and some of what's articulated there, then yes, you all would be voting that. Whether or not you vote to approve whatever the recommendations are in January would probably depend on whatever those recommendations actually are, or, or whether it would show up in other places that you all are voting already anyway, because you're voting a program of studies and you're voting a budget.
We don't, we don't vote, we vote the middle school program of studies, I don't think we do.
You don't, but you vote the high school program of studies.
We do vote the high school.
Like I said, we can't make adjustments to middle without knowing what those adjustments are going to be. There, there would be changes to a high school program of studies, if you shift sequencing of content, if you shift naming of courses, if you shift ability to take two classes at once, for example.
Yeah.
Those are changes, some of the adjustments we made were reflected in the program of studies that you all voted.
Well, okay, we don't have to decide now, but it might not be a bad idea to have, to structure a conversation so that somehow we're receiving a report about what's going to change the middle school in terms of the curriculum and math.
You certainly will.
And then, if it, it's appropriate to take a vote, we can figure it out.
Right.
In the winter of twenty, whatever it is, six. That's all, I just wanted to kind of get the understanding of what the dialogue is going to be between all of you and the school committee and the curriculum committee over the next couple of twelve months. That's it. And I think, I don't know, 30% better, I, what did Jane say, 30? I think it's kind of harsh, I don't know. I think you're doing great, I think you're doing great. I'm 30% worse than I was when I started.
She's been here multiple times, it's.
30%, but then like it gets over, that's over 100 every, 30% every time? That was great, thank you, very clear. And if I understood it, that means it's good.
Ms. Mederos, has a hand up.
Ms. Mederos. Hi, my, my comment goes back a little while in, in the conversation, it sort of went in different direction, but I just, as we continue to have these conversations, and I know we're going to be talking about math for a long time, and we've been talking about math for a long time, just when we talk about individual experiences, I think we need to be careful not to drift close to the line of talking about individual staff members, just as, as we kind of talk about our, you know, lived experiences, just to be careful not to, you know, put individual staff members kind of in the spotlight as being the, the target of the, the criticism. Just felt like I needed to say that.
Thank you, teachers are our partners, not our adversaries. Anyone else before I go through my notes? Seeing, first of all, my first step is to commend the superintendent. We are going to be evaluating her and say, don't, don't leave.
Oh, I wasn't sure.
I'm one seventh of the committee, you know?
You just put a whole page up, maybe please.
Yeah, I've got several pages here. I'm a math educator, remember that. So this cuts close to my heart, I'm listening very happily to the ELA stuff as a former elementary principal and teacher, but I mean, this is, this is sort of where I'm coming from, and I want to first of all commend the superintendent, when she set forth a student learning goal, which is to improve outcomes for all students who are focused on major instructional priorities, implementation of curriculum and practices aligned with deeper learning with a specific focus on middle school mathematics, instructional practices, and structural scheduling, access and support opportunities for students, which means that when we evaluate her in September for this year, this is the heart and soul of the, of her student learning outcomes. So she's putting a lot of her chips on the table in mathematics. So I, I, I have to say that the district isn't doing nothing, the district is really taking this seriously to the point that it's the top of the superintendent's list. That said, my notes go from here, and it, it's been a tough year for me to sit here and listen to some of the discussions, particularly with my background. As a math instructor, I've never taught sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, but I've taught third, I've taught ninth. And I have definite opinions. I'm going to start off with the first thing, which is really sort of the heart and soul of the district, which is where all our kids are going to, which is text directly from the Course of Studies in the Program Selection Guide for Arlington High School, which says, "The Arlington Public Schools encourage all students to meet their maximum potential. Recommended prerequisites are intended to identify the skills and competency students should possess prior to enrollment in order to be successful in a given course. Required prerequisites that are not tied to sequential course offerings, such as you must take Spanish II before you can take Spanish III, are inconsistent with this vision and shall not be barriers to course selection. Teachers and counselors can provide specific assignments and samples of coursework to help students make the choices in appropriate courses for the levels of study." And from what I've been hearing over the past several months, and this has existed before you came in, you've inherited this, is that we're running a, a sixth grade bypass, where in fifth grade, we're selecting those who are going to be on a course to hit calculus in eleventh grade, and using one test, a high stakes test of all things, in order to make that determination. And that makes no sense to me. And it also conflicts with what we say in the high school book. So that, that when we're closing kids out of, of a pathway because of a test or because of the opinion of the professionals, I, I think, I've got a problem. Because this is what our, our ethics and, and our goals are, that we've stated in print and we voted in our, in our Course of Studies. And it's sort of my expectation that going forward, that no matter what we're doing, we're going to live up to what we've got as our, as our philosophy of course level enrollment. Now, I'm going to come back to be into the reality world, as a, as a school administrator, I know how difficult it is to change practice, I know how difficult it is to change curriculum, I know how difficult it is to make systemic changes, because as I think somebody alluded to, moving a district is like turning around an ocean liner. We, it's, it's not a sports car, it, it's a real challenge. And in this case, this is sort of like the big deal, we've got to make changes, build something new while we're still running traffic through the curriculum. My hope, and I'm listening to my colleague, Ms. Morgan, that the cohort that we're experiencing in sixth grade is going to experience something really wonderful when they hit seventh grade. And ideally, there'd be some way that we can take a look at the students out of 525 to have 15 in, in the bypass and 500 not, I think that they're, that cut score is kind of wacky and disproportionate to what, what we're seeing in terms of kids' abilities. That we're going to have some sort of a pilot in seventh grade that's going to address the kids who didn't move into the bypass and certainly can do more and should be, do more and have better opportunities. I, I think that they should have the same opportunity to get the calculus in one of the grade. Now, I'm going to go, a little stream of consciousness is that once you get to the high school, it's a beautiful thing, because you've got a lot of passing lanes, because you can do double block semester schedules, lots of ways to move kids up, and we're doing a lot of good things. First of all, our open response, or constructive response scores in this district are very high, consistent through the middle grade, so there's very strong effort that what you're doing is doing very well in terms of making sure the kids understand mathematics and communicate mathematically. I'm not going to discount that, I'm going to say that this is really, really excellent. I, I find your constructive response scores to be excellent, astounding, laudable, particularly in sixth grade, where it's 150% of the state average. Okay? But I want to make sure that as we're developing a plan for 2026, 27, that her kid's cohort is well-served and happy in math next year at Edison, and that we don't have the same sort of unhappiness going through next year's sixth grade, because we're not changing the practice of doing a bypass. So that's sort of where I'm laying out. My heart, in my professional expertise, at this point, I think you're doing an outstanding job in, in planning this out, and I think there's a lot of work ahead. I think the school committee has given you the support you've asked for in terms of additional math coaching. I think we've got a superintendent who's bold and courageous in making this her, her, her prime achievement goal, and I really resent some of the people who are coming around and telling us how awful our math program is, because it isn't. And that we, we're doing badly because we're only one of about 35 or so districts in the state that offer that calcul, that Physics C electromagnism, electricity course, I'm not a physics teacher, but offer that. Only about 35 public high schools offer that, and we're offering a pathway to get kids there. So we're, we're at a top-tier level there too. Question is, are, are we bad? No, we're really good, but we can get better, and individual kids can and should do more if that's what they want to do. And if that's not what they want to do, we're not going to push them into AP Physics C electronics, electromagnetic magnetism, which I'm sure I couldn't pass either. I, I, as a math educator and a, and a math person, I hated math until I got to geometry, and I really only excelled when I got to statistics, because I'm really into something that I can grasp hold of in terms of being passionate about modeling and something I can relate to in a, in a concrete world. I hated factoring, I hated teaching factoring, I love playing with geometry, and I'll leave you with one thing, which I think is going to support your effort. My first year teaching as an algebra teacher, I was in this really wacky district in New Jersey where they had a trimesterized schedule, and the really wacky thing about it is every trimester, they shuffle the kids, all of a sudden I got a new group of kids a third of the way through the school year, and I'm doing proofs with them in geometry, and they're writing CPCPC on the paper. You know what CPCPC is?
Yeah, it's.
It is an abbreviation they were using for corresponding parts of congruent polygons are congruent. Okay, it's part of their proof explanation, and for some reason, their teachers, their prior, prior teachers before they got shuffled into my class were accepting CPCPC is the answer. So I looked at them and said, what is a CPCPC? I don't know, but it's the right answer, so it might be the right answer, but if you don't know what it is, it's worthless. So the basic understanding, be able to tell a story, explain things, is really critical. And I think that's what you're striving for, and I think it's really wonderful, that's the most important thing, because we're living in a technical world where the rules are changing drastically, and the capacity of machines and computers and AI to do calculations is going to change the way we rely to asking it questions, to communicate with it and communicate with others. And from the way these scores look here, you're focusing on the communications, and that's a beautiful thing, and I think you're doing great work. And I want to make sure that despite the fact that I, I've got my list of concerns, I think I'm coming forth with a list of concerns in a district that does excellent things, and I'm really proud of what you're doing and what the teachers are doing. And that's where I'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Now we get to go through some joy, I think we go to an SOI.
Nobody wants to hear about how we need to rebuild Edison Middle School? I'm kidding, go home. Thank you all. Okay. Nope, hold on, let me fix that. All right, I am going to make this brief, but I just wanted to provide the committee with a little bit of an overview of some of the things we're working on highlighting in the Statement of Interest for Edison Middle School to the MSBA, which, when I'm done, I will ask whether the committee sees it fit to vote to authorize me to submit an SOI, and if so, then we will take that to the Select Board for a vote on their part and submit an SOI to rebuild Edison Middle School before their deadline on April 11th. So, I just want to talk a little bit about what the priorities were that I think I'd recommend we select. There are some others that we could discuss, but I think there are two that make a lot of sense for this submission of a Statement of Interest, what some of the major building concerns are for the SOI proposal that we're hoping to highlight in some of the narrative sections, and what the process looks like, and then finally, I'll have a slide that has some of the vote language on it for you to consider. So the Massachusetts School Building Authority, as part of the application for a Statement of Interest, gives eight priorities that we can choose from, and we've chosen two of them. They are numbered, so I've numbered them five and seven, because that's the number in the submission document. I have chosen number five, which is replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation, decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. And I'll talk more about what some of those things are that we see as priority at OMS. And number seven, which is replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And I think, you know, if you think about some of the types of teaching and learning we've been talking about tonight, the building itself isn't necessarily conducive to or helping us do any of that sort of instruction. So you could also make an argument for their number six, short-term enrollment growth, because we're certainly undergoing short-term enrollment growth now. Edison is, it's full, like it can't really hold more programming than it's currently holding, but by the time the school's online, those enrollments will likely be sort of stable, possibly even declining, so I'm not necessarily recommending enrollment as a priority for the submission, though it is one of the options that we could consider. So I want to talk through some of the building concerns that we have heard from staff members, I have seen in real life, face-to-face, and that we know came up in a capital needs assessment that we did in 2022. That capital needs assessment looked at the full building and did a cost out of what it would be for us to prioritize OMS in our capital investments over the next many years. And the answer was many, many, many millions of dollars, and so. And so that capital needs assessment was in part preparing us to submit an SOI, and I'm going to cite it several times here. So that assessment highlighted an immediate need for $500,000 in boiler repairs in 2022, which we didn't do. And so, and an additional $300,000 by 2027. So in the immediate sense, boiler repairs or HVAC repairs to the tune of about $800,000 would be necessary in order to keep this building operating effectively. Heating and cooling is very inconsistent in the building. There are broken sensors that trip the heat always on in some areas of the building. There are boilers that work inconsistently in other parts of the building, so it can literally be over 80 degrees in one room in one part of the building and like 50 degrees in another room in another part of the building. And if you walk in in the middle of a school day, in the middle of the winter, you'll experience this. The cooling systems in the central part of the building create condensation in the summer because they hit humid air that results in water damage. And we have had many instances of needing to do mold mitigation and monitoring as well as remediation in the summer as we head into the fall that has caused some concern about health for teachers. We know how to mediate that. We have the skills, we have the technology for it, our staff know what to do. And it's not very comforting when you actually have visible mold challenges because you have moisture happening in a classroom or a learning space. None of those systems are energy efficient, obviously, or sustainable, especially when we're opening a window in January to cool off a room that's very, very warm, which I know has happened to Ms. Maderas's room. And that slows our progress towards sustainability goals that we've articulated as a town. So HVAC is certainly one of the major concerns. One other one is the roof. So contributing to some of the water challenges that we have related to condensation, we also have pooling and snow ice melt on the flat roof. The capital needs assessment talked about this at length. That causes water damage in the building throughout the seasons. We have had vendors out, they've conducted repairs, they've sort of sealed off certain portions of the roof. But when you're doing patchwork on a roof, it can be a lot harder to mitigate flooding. The water damage is visible on ceiling tiles, and so it doesn't look very clean. It can also, you know, subsequently cause concerns about health. And that also happens when the cooling systems cause condensation, if that vent system is above some of those ceiling tiles. OMS has had to replace furniture fixtures, technology when water damage has occurred in classrooms over the past many years, and that ends up displacing students and disrupting learning when it happens on a school day. We also have some concerns about accessibility. This is a building with a whole lot of stairs, requiring a whole lot of ramps. And so there are a lot of areas in the building that have accessibility issues for anyone with mobility or vision challenges. A few examples of this are the step ups and downs. Sometimes it's one step, but it's, there are a lot of places where you kind of have to step up and down or go up a short flight of stairs. And there are long ramps in a lot of these places to access some of those common areas. The gym is used for instruction frequently. This is a picture of the ramp that goes into the gym, and it's notable that the light switch is on one end of the ramp. And so if you go in at the other end of the ramp and the light's off, you won't be able to see going up and down the ramp. So there's a lot of examples of spaces where the building wasn't really designed for modern accessibility standards. And then there are like, there are multiple wings and mezzanines that are separated by staircases. So for any student with crutches, we've had to do a lot of mitigation. Any student in a chair, we've had to do a lot of mitigation of the space itself, and we've had students who also are vision impaired, and so they're struggling to make their way through a building that is not really made for anyone who's having any sort of mobility challenges. Another area of building concerns is actual architectural deterioration. So we have a lot of areas where there's mortar loss, cracking, exposed or corroded steel beneath bricks or sort of the surface infrastructure. And you can see it with your eyes. There are displaced suspended ceiling tiles in some of the gyms that either we can constantly remediate, or it's a gym. So, you know, if students play with a ball and it goes up to the ceiling, it's going to displace a ceiling tile. And so you're going to be constantly doing that, or you can replace the ceiling. There are a lot of failures in the exterior caulking that's causing some of the leaks. And so you can remediate by sealing the roof, but if the caulk in another area is failing, then you're going to have water invade. And then there are a lot of other areas that require maintenance, routine maintenance or replacement of floor tiles, ceilings, fixtures, exterior doors, other major fixtures. And the capital plan that we had, the capital assessment we had done years ago totaled 3.6 million in those repairs in year one, and at least $200,000 a year in the subsequent years each year, which is significantly more than we've put aside for just regular maintenance in next year's operating budget and more than we have available in many years in capital repairs, because those are usually for one project, not for sort of ongoing maintenance and upkeep of some of these architectural things. And then finally, and I actually think this is probably one of the most, the biggest reasons why we're most concerned about rebuilding Odison, is the layout for programming purposes. It has an awkward layout. It doesn't give us areas for collaborative learning, doesn't provide easy breakout spaces. There's one example of a breakout space here that is quite literally in a closet. And so we've been creative, and I have to hand it to everybody at the Odison. There are some very innovative uses of space. However, it isn't necessarily always conducive to making people feel as though they belong in a learning environment when you have to do a breakout or have a sort of side conversation with a classmate or a teacher, and it's occurring in a space like that. It doesn't feel welcoming, it doesn't feel like you belong. Several spaces have been retrofitted for new uses. There are a lot of science classrooms, this is a really sort of concrete example of this, that lack the lab sinks that you see in this picture and other science furnishings and outfitting. And they look more like this, which is more of an ELA classroom, but this is actually a science class taking place in a room that does not have the appropriate fixtures. And in some of those spaces where we sort of repurposed a space, if you put somebody in an office space that used to be a closet, you're supposed to ventilate it, but we don't actually have the infrastructure to be able to put the ventilation in. So some people end up working in spaces that do not have appropriate ventilation. We've said, don't do that, we'll find another space, and still people kind of land in the area where they can find somewhere to land. There is a lack of common areas that doesn't necessarily foster collaboration, interdisciplinary work or inclusion, and some of our specialized programs are secluded from the core classrooms because of how the building's built and the needs of those classrooms. And so there's not a lot of opportunity for you to share ideas and share practices when you're literally, you know, multiple floors and wings away from your colleagues. And it's also difficult for the students because some of our programming that really should be sort of at the heart of the school isn't actually at the heart of the school. So these are just a few of the challenges that we know are there, and we're trying to make sure that we get these highlighted in the narrative. You got a very early draft of what we're working on. We have a whole lot of people contributing to that document. We will have a full draft before we go before the select board, and I'll be sure to send that to the committee as soon as it's ready to go next week. But these are some of the things that we're working on incorporating while we're also going and getting all the nuts and bolts around how many windows and when the last time the roof was repaired was and all those things. So our process is that you would authorize me to submit the SOI once it's completed. That would be tonight. We would complete the application with support from our partners and facilities, operations, sustainability, our other town colleagues. We would present and discuss the submission with the select board on April 7th, and they would hopefully authorize us to submit it. And then the submission deadline is Friday, April 11th. The consideration period for eligibility can include, does include senior study visits. If they deem it necessary for the individual school, we would get a visit. That usually takes place August through October, and then you get invitation into the eligibility period after the completion of that. It kind of depends how many of those they need to do. If we were to be invited into the eligibility period, we'd have 270 days to complete a lot of steps in order to progress to an invitation to engage in feasibility study. If we were to be invited into that eligibility period, we would have to secure funding for a feasibility study within that 270 days. And I'm happy to go find out more about what all the pieces of that process are, and if there are any questions or answer questions, if we have them. And if the committee so chooses, this would be the vote to authorize submission of an SOI after we do all of those steps on the previous slide. Happy to answer any questions.
Does Mr. Thielman have the text of the motion? In this case, if not, I can read it.
Maybe you can read it, and I'll say yes.
Okay. So I'm going to read the text of the motion. Mr. Thielman will make it, somebody will second it, then we'll have discussion. The motion would be resolved having convened in an open meeting on Thursday, March 27, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date. The school committee of the town of Arlington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent's schools, Dr. Elizabeth Homan, to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 2025 for the Odison Middle School located at 63 Acton Street, Arlington, Mass. 02476, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and replacement renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Arlington Public Schools to file an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Motion by Mr. Thielman, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Exton. Okay, discussion, questions. Mr. Carden.
Thank you. So I know we're not supposed to operate with surprises, but for me, the surprise was receiving an SOI draft, you know, yesterday that is virtually incomplete, I mean virtually not complete at all. You know, I think there's not enough here for me to vote on. There's some information in the slides, but there really isn't an application here for me to review and approve. So I'm certainly not ready to vote for this tonight. If we do move forward with the vote, it won't be a unanimous vote. When we look back at the APS submission, you know, the meat of the submission is the answer, sort of the open-ended answer to the questions about the different, the two different priorities that we've chosen. And you can actually copy a lot of the information from the APS, the AHS submission, because some of the issues are the same. We don't have the report that we had last time from HMFH, which detailed in a lot of detail, like this is the number of science classrooms that are deficient, these are the number of closets that we're using for, you know, for flex space, things like that. I don't know if we have that information to drop into this, but it's not here now. So that's where I am on this. Thank you.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
So just to clarify, the reason we asked the superintendent to submit this, knowing that it was going to be a really tight deadline, that given everything, it was not going to be as built out an application as was the final high school, the accepted high school one was, is that we don't expect to actually get it this year. This is the one that we expect them to put on the shelf. The next year is the one that we're really going for. And this is just to mark a spot. I mean, we don't expect to get it for a number of reasons. One, we still have the high school underway, but we found out that you can submit the next one even while you've got something else as the priority. I think perhaps we should have made that more clear to the rest of the committee, but it's, this isn't intended to be, our most competitive application will be starting next year. This is meant to kind of check the box that, yes, we applied before.
I remember anything to add, Percy summarized it perfectly.
Carden.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the vote is, this is a statement of interest form which describes and explains the following deficiencies, and it doesn't. So I'm just, you know, we had discussed actually submitting the SOI last year, and we realized that we did not have time to do it. We've had 12 months, and I know we had a change in our budget office, and I know it's been extremely difficult to focus on this, but, you know, it's two weeks away. And so I was expecting, you know, not a polished final draft, but I was expecting a real draft.
I'm trying to read your.
No, I have nothing to add. I'm going to vote for it for the reasons that have been articulated with my colleague. And I think we, I think it's best to move forward and submit something to get the process started. I think it's a placeholder for us, and then I think we'll see where we stand. When you apply and submit, you get a chance to get some feedback, you start a conversation with the MSBA. I think it's important that we start that dialogue, we know where we stand. This starts the process of us knowing where we stand. And I think it's really important that we get that feedback, and the only way you can do it is by applying. You can't get on the phone and say, should we do this? This is happening. What do you think? You got to submit something for them to react to it. And then we'll get a, we'll get some hard data that we can use to build a case over time. This is why you do it. You do it to start the conversation. You can't start the conversation otherwise, and they really won't have a meeting with you unless you do this.
Yeah, Ms. Morgan.
So I agree. I generally, like I joke a lot, I really like to turn things in and get an A, right? Like I want to get an A on my work. And I appreciate that this, you know, maybe isn't the A, but I think it's important that we try, we do this because, you know, we have teachers and staff and kids in that building, and I think it's important that we really put a stake in that this is our next project. This is the next thing that we're going to do. And I lived through the building project at Stratton, I've lived through the AHS building project, and I'm really mindful of the toll these projects and the preparation period takes on the adults in the building. Because once you start talking about them, you're seeing all of the things that are wrong, all of the things that Dr. Homan outlined, right? Every time you walk into your classroom and it's 85 degrees, and you're just like, oh my God, when is this going to get, when is this going to be over for me and for my students? So I think that we need to do it. I'm going to support it. I, I'm, you know, we have a really good history of MSBA projects in Arlington, so I think that, you know, that we're going to get there and put this together in a comprehensive way. And I think that, I think we have to start now and make it really clear what our intentions are, and this is one way to do that.
Mr. Carden.
So just to clarify, I'm absolutely in support of submitting an SOI this cycle, but I believe as a committee, we need a real application to approve, and we can do that on the 7th or the 10th.
Do we have to do this before the select board? I just want to remind everyone that the vote is an authorization of me to submit a statement of interest that describes and explains the deficiencies for the priorities outlined there.
Yeah.
This is an authorization for me to submit it when it is done. It was not my understanding from conversations with the chair of the facilities subcommittee or the committee.
Yeah.
That that required a final draft to be submitted to the committee in order for a vote to take place, nor is it my understanding that when we submitted the first SOI for the high school, that that was provided to the committee.
It wasn't. Yeah, so I think you, I think you sort of, I think we're authorizing the superintendent to do this, and we're entrusting her to do work, a work, to use Ms. Morgan's term, and I'm sure it will be. That's what we're doing. We don't need to see the final perfect thing, and everybody can meet with the superintendent or she can share it with people if people want to review it and make comments, if you want to, if she wants to. But I, I'm confident the superintendent will put together something that is excellent before it goes to the MSBA. I'm also, I agree with what Dr. Allison Ampe said about the process and our chances. about the process and our chances right now. And I have had 15, between Thompson and the AHS project, many, many years of conversations and meetings with the MSBA. And you really don't get anywhere until you submit something and you put a stake in the ground. And the elected officials in the town, the school committee, and the Select Board, whether it's unanimous, it doesn't really matter. But the elected representatives of the voters say, this is something we want to do. And then the MSBA responds and says what they're going to say. And they may say, great. They may say something else. And that's how you learn. And that's how the dialogue starts. And that's how the dialogue started in 2014, when we were denied. We started a dialogue with the MSBA when we were denied for the school in 2014. After the 2013 NEASQ report basically said the building was a mess. High school was a mess. Even with that attached, we had to start a dialogue, and then we had people get involved. And I think you were at some of the meetings, and we got better at the submission. We found out what they wanted and tailored the submission, the second SOI, or wrote it in a better.
Ms. Morgan.
Can I just ask a calendaring question? So can we, so this is going to the Select Board on April 7th? Yes, at 6:30, 7 o'clock, right? Could we not have, could we not vote on this on April 7th at, I don't know how long y'all are planning to organize for, 15 minutes? Could we not vote on this on April 7th at 5:45 before it went? So that we were voting to? I went to the bathroom. I don't even know what this is.
It's the same thing we did for the?
I'm looking for a way to make a, get to 7 if we can. But maybe, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
So the plus of doing it tonight is that then it goes to the, the Select Board needs to get it before?
Before the meeting.
Before their meeting, right? And this way it goes, and they know that what our committee's stance is on the vote.
Under, okay.
And again, this is not expected to be the one that the MSBA bites at, right? We think that's going to be next time. But we want to, well.
We want a better, it's going to have more documentation than what it has right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, 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 no. I'm not saying this is, this is not, this is not the final thing. I'm just saying that it's also not.
I listened to Mr. Thielman and Dr. Allison Ampe's point is that we had the ultimate train wreck of a high school. And the first application was a NEASQ recommendation for demolition.
Right.
And MSBA said, well, thank you very much. That's interesting. Try again next year. And so no matter how deficient the Odison is, we're going to get on a first application. Well, that's interesting. Thank you very much. Come back next year. And to do it this year, coming back next year is a year earlier than if we don't do it this year. So all we're doing is authorizing the superintendent to file a Statement of Interest. Not a particular Statement of Interest. It's just a Statement of Interest that we haven't even seen yet, but that it's okay for her to do that within the context of the language that MSBA requires us to vote. That's all we're doing. I will hold, Mr. Carden.
Yeah, so just two things. So just legally speaking, it says to submit THE Statement of Interest. So it's, speaking of a specific Statement of Interest Form, which really is not before us. Secondly, there have been lots of schools that have been successful on their first round. I'm not saying that that means we should delay our submission until we get a better draft, but that's just incorrect. So there are several schools that have been successful on their first submission. So anyways, because I'm not comfortable with THE Statement of Interest Form that is before us, I cannot vote for it at this time.
Okay. We'll do a roll call then.
Well, I think we need to?
We have more conversation. Dr. Allison Ampe.
I think we should do a roll call no matter what. But let's just think through, and Mr. Thielman, I'm looking at you, actually, and Ms. Morgan too. What do you think they, if we send it to the Select Board and say, we're waiting to, I mean, if we wait and vote on the 7th, like, the Select Board is going to vote on the 7th? Do you think it's better if we are all voted yes? Or do you think it's better if we?
I?
You think it's better we vote now?
I think it would now. Let me just explain it to them. Well, I think you can, I personally have enough confidence in everyone going before the Select Board on the 7th, that they'll explain it beautifully.
We could potentially revote it.
We could. Or we could have a special meeting on Zoom for the purposes of adjusting the vote if that happens as well.
We can.
We can do any number of things, but I think that having this accomplished right now will enable everyone to move it forward. And if there's a change from a 6-1 or a 6-0-1 to a 7-0 in the interim, we can re-sign this and go from there.
Can I look at this?
Yeah. So we'll have to get a new vote form because, you know, but we'll do the roll call now, and we'll see what happens. If we have any, yeah.
I'm not sure we have to do it this way. I think we just have to attest it in the minutes for the first one, for the SOI. For other votes, we have to start doing really fancy things.
Well, I, this, I don't know, but I'm being cautious.
Okay.
we've submitted in the past using a roll call vote and showing it. Roll call, Ms. Exton.
Yes.
Mr. Carden.
No.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Chair votes in the affirmative. That's a 6-1 vote. We'll have to redo the form, and I'll sign it later.
All right. We've had some exciting student-led sustainability efforts going on. Hardee, Project Learning Garden, won a grant and said the amount of $7,500, which gives students a lot of experience working in the community garden and resources some of the needs of that, of the garden itself. Some high school students got an Earth Day Boston Grant to support the Arlington Eco Summit at Town Hall in April. And we had some students attend the Massachusetts Environmental Education Society Conference recently. They presented some of their perspectives on creating climate-resilient schools and some of the initiatives that they've been leading, and showed some real student leadership in areas of sustainability. And we're very proud of them. The math team already talked about Math Morning, but I really enjoyed also visiting Math Morning and learning about some of the work that's happening at the elementary school and seeing just how packed the room was for our families. And they've expanded this now to multiple grades. At Bishop's School is something that Bishop started, but that, as they mentioned, Pierce has now picked up. So it's a great opportunity for families to go and see their kids in school, which is extremely exciting for the students, and to sort of learn a little bit about the math curriculum and how it's operating, and learn also from their children about what they're learning in math. I want to share a few upcoming events. First of all, we're into MCAS 2025. So good luck to our students. Make sure you eat breakfast before you head to school. And thank you to families for helping us make sure that this is a? Or have breakfast at school. Yeah, go to school at 7:30 and have breakfast. But we're proud of our students. We know that they'll do great. And we wish them a lot of luck with their testing this year. April 5th, we have from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, it's a Saturday, a Coffee and Conversations recruitment event. Please come join us and spread the word. And this is something that the HR department with the task force has worked on putting together? Are you and, you and Dr. Pudel Thomas? Do you want to say any more about it?
Dr. Pudel Thomas, HR, administration. We are, we did this a couple of years ago and was pretty successful. We were able to hire some people from that event. And it's a good way to, it'll be in the front of the high school in the, in the foyer. And a good way to get an introduction to APS. We've invited people that we met at some job fairs, and it's been in social media, and other people have seen it. And it's been, people spread the word.
So any of you are welcome to come help us promote all the awesome work that we're doing. And please tell anyone who you think might be interested in any of the positions we'd have open next school year. The students shared that the musical's coming up. Dr. Ford Walker shared that we're going to be doing some family forums and a community screening, so I'll slide right past those. And I'll go to a couple of quick operational updates. We did receive a $13,000 teacher diversification grant. This is the third year in a row we've received this grant. We have used it quite successfully. We've increased the diversity of our teaching core. We've used it to subsidize coursework, testing for licensure, and other support programming. And last year, we hosted a pretty popular MTEL prep course. So we're looking at potentially doing that again for any staff who are interested in gaining licensure. I also want to welcome Jay McNeil, who will be the new Town of Arlington Facilities Director. We announced that earlier this week and are very much looking forward to him starting on April 22nd. And a quick K enrollment update. We've done the first round of buffer assignments. Several families have chosen to go on the waitlist after receiving their second choice. I had shared what some of the strategy would be, and there were no exceptions to that strategy with the exception of people who already had children in the first-choice school. If the first-choice school was one of the ones that was more to the east of town. So there are several people who have asked to be placed on the waitlist. I do plan on doing a first waitlist round of consideration in early May just so that we can have as many families at wherever they're going to go to kindergarten as possible. And I do, right now, have, you'll see in the numbers, Stratton is a little higher than some of the other kindergartens. And that's just sort of how things fell out. I do have a number of families who are requesting reconsideration. And so we can even that out pretty easily. So I'm keeping a close eye on these. We'll do buffer zone assignments as they come in. I also wanted to share that graph on the left shows that faster rate of early kindergarten enrollment compared to previous years, which is fantastic. Our registration team did a great job getting the word out that we were opening up kindergarten registration. It's tracking, you know, slope-wise pretty closely with previous years. And we're keep tracking that as we move along. I don't have the data in quite as granular of detail from years before last school year, but I do hope to sort of keep an eye on this particular trend each year so that we can see how different schools trend in terms of where, when families will enroll. And we can also keep track of how we're doing on getting the word out quickly so that we have as many enrollments come in as quickly as we can because it does impact our planning. Happy to take any questions.
Seeing none. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. School committee draft minutes, February 27th. School committee draft minutes, March 13th. School committee meeting minutes for the special meeting of March 20th. And the domestic overnight field trip, the Model UN Conference, which is an annual thing. We've done this before. Motion by? Mr. Thielman, seconded by Ms. Morgan. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Unanimous vote, 7-0. Subcommittee liaison reports. Budget, Dr. Allison Ampe.
So budget met last year, last week. It feels like last year. Met last week, earliest? Yeah, last week. We met last week. Sorry, I'm getting really confused now. Okay, we met last week to go over the superintendent's presentation to Finance Committee, which happened on Monday evening. It went very well. I was watching from Zoom, so you can just see my name up there. But I appreciate everyone who was able to be there in person. The superintendent did an excellent job at presenting the information, and Mr. Gorsky too, at presenting the information and answering the questions from the Finance Committee. And I think, at least I was quite surprised that they then just voted it right in front of us. So that's great.
12-4 affirmative vote, yeah.
Yeah.
Chair of stand. So there were some people.
So I don't know right now what our next, what the plan is for budget. I expect we'll be meeting soon. And just to get, yeah.
You're going to need to meet soon before the reorg or the reorged form. This is our last regular meeting before reorg.
Okay.
Yeah. Community relations, Ms. Exton.
No report.
CIAA, Ms. Morgan.
Oh, wow. True to form, we are going to get in our very last meeting about an hour before we reorganize. Very delighted by. And my, I've been the CIA Subcommittee Chair for a long time. So in fact, I think I have been it since I was last Chair of the School Committee. So it's been a while. So I will be leading my last meeting on April 7th. Big day tonight, talking a lot about the 7th at 3:30 PM. Very looking forward to, Dr. Ford Walker is going to talk to us about the student support team and give us an update on that. And, you know, there's always an opportunity to add other things between now and 48 hours before the 7th. So we'll leave you all guessing. I'm looking forward to it. And then we will vote to give that off to somebody else. This will be my last CIA report.
For at least another year. You're destined to resume that. You do this so well. Facilities, Mr. Thielman.
No report on facilities.
Policies and procedures, Mr. Carden. No report. Our only United School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman.
So two things. One, everything is going well. Down's house is coming down. And that's a blessed thing. That's a good thing. And so, and, you know, we'll see. That's a key part of the project. Hopefully, everything goes smoothly there. And if that does, then we should be in good shape to meet all the deadlines and be pretty much done by Labor Day. We, the committee selected me to be the representative to the naming committee. And the committee set up a policy for the naming committee. The naming committee has met, surfaced almost 40 names, nominations, something like that. We set up a rubric based on the school committee's criteria. Put a little note in the meeting. And we're pretty close to making our selection. And then the committee, the charter for the naming committee says that we're supposed to consult with the memorials committee. However, when we talked about it and thought about it, the school committee actually has the power to authorize a submission to the memorials committee. And so the committee feels that rather than consult with the name, the memorials committee, the town, the best thing is to bring names before the school committee on April 10th, to have the school committee discuss it, and then the school committee to take an affirmative vote, if it wants to, to refer the names to the memorials committee. And so that's what I'm suggesting. And we'll have the names for you, barring any issue in our next meeting, for the meeting on the 10th.
Of course, you need to name something in the building after each of the seven school committees members.
Well, no, there's been a good process. There were lots of great nominees. I learned a lot about some people I didn't know about. No, it was a very, it's been a good process. Been a very good process. Good names have come up, and diversity, lots of diversity, I think.
I appreciate your efforts. Ms. Morgan.
Just to clarify though, Jeff, the idea is, is that the naming committee will come to us and say, this is what we've done, right? We can, it is, as is our right, we could throw it all out if we so chose. Or we could adopt it in whole or part, or however we decide. And then we send it to the public, we send whatever we agree on to the public memorials committee. They are a delight to track down and work with, which is awesome. So we will? So we will do that. And then, then we'll come back and have our vote once they sort of give us their feedback, is my understanding.
At the same time, there's already a name on one of the, one of the rooms.
I know. That one's on the list, though, right? That we're going to vote, okay.
It's on there, and so, yeah, it should be interesting. But I am so confident in the Chair's ability to kind of maneuver and just get this done that I'm.
We're going to get this done.
Just to clarify, when you say memorials committee.
I'm, no, no, no.
The public memorials committee.
The public memorials committee, not town committee. Not, not the high school memorials.
Okay, I was just checking.
No, 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 the public memorial's committee, no, no, the public memorials committee.
The last time we did it, he was in Florida, so we'll have to.
Yeah, no, public.
There's a Zoom thing, you know.
And we do want to finish all this by the end of the year, ideally so everything is up by the time we, by September.
Okay. Liaison reports, announcements, future agenda items. Let me just, if nobody else has anything, reminder that our organization meeting is Monday, April 7th at 5:30 PM. We have invited the town clerk to come to do the swearing in of the members elected so you don't have to go to Town Hall beforehand. So we'll make a little ceremony out of it. Bring your family. We'll have a cake or something appropriate. Please, if you're one of the people on the committee who has a gluten or dairy or whatever issue, please consult with Ms. Diggins so that the treats we have are appropriate. Because I'm not going to make that determination, but that's what we're going to do. And then we'll take a group picture to celebrate the new committee and Ms. Morgan's ascension to the Chair. And then we will.
Well, it's not a done deal till it's not done till it's done, right?
Well, I intend to vote for Jane Morgan for Chair. I think she's going to be an outstanding Chair. She's done such a great job on the CIA Subcommittee that how can she not do a wonderful job? And hopefully, we don't get another pandemic. We now have to do an executive session. Dr. Allison Ampe, were you raising your hand for a reason before executive session?
No, I was going to motion.
Okay, you were motioning to leave before we did the executive session.
I second that motion.
The executive session would be to construct strategy section. I can't talk tonight. Strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, negotiation discussion AAA, AAA, or AEA Unit A, AEA C, AEA D, local 680 school bus operators, school CAF workers, traffic supervisors. Motion by Mr., Dr. Allison Ampe, second by Mr. Thielman. The seconding authority of the committee. Roll call vote, Ms. Exton.
Yes.
Ms. Carden.
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
Yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Chair votes in the affirmative, 7-0, unanimous vote. Unanimous vote. I'm talking too fast. We are now in the executive session. And we will not return to public session.